He's got a leak error right now.
That monitor is on, just fine. Something is going on with the monitor.
Okay, well, go ahead and start. March twenty first, city council meeting, a regular monthly meeting. Your roll call?
Mayor Ikorst.
Here.
Council Perkner.
Here.
Council Phillips.
Here.
Council Richards. Council Cross.
Here.
Jim is in transit, I guess, so.
Yeah, he's trying to get on. Let's show up over there, that one when he tries to get it.
So we have an agenda. I would like to move up. Item. Unfinished business. Action item number two. Which is resolution twenty twenty-three dash eleven. Naming appointees to inaugural EDA Board of Commissioners. Up to after water and sewer before public works. Any other comments?
After.
After water and sewer. Before public works.
And. Mayor, I, I think we should perhaps separate out the fee schedule in the consent agenda.
Out of the consent agenda?
Yeah.
And where would you like to put that? Your business?
Or we can do if that's B, the unfinished business.
Oh, okay, yeah, that's probably what's broken. So make a motion, we move the. Resolution twenty-three dash eleven. Unfinished business B up to before public works. And the. Action items, the fee schedule. Be in the unfinished business. Second?
Second.
Any other comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. The forum is, city council welcomes and encourages participation from our community members. Please keep in mind that your comments must be pertinent to city business and must adhere to data privacy rules. No employee's name may be used. Please do not expect action from the council this evening regarding your concerns. To address city council during the public forum, please step to the podium, state your name, address, and fill out the form that's on the podium. Speakers will be recognized only once, and with that, if there's anyone that would like to speak in the public forum, please come to the podium.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Krista Keer and my address is four six zero River Park Road Southeast. And my reason for addressing the council tonight is to share my willingness to join the Planning and Zoning Committee, even though the committee has brought forward a recommendation for a different candidate. I think my recent experience and skills would be a great asset to this community and to Orinoco as it continues to grow and face challenges. It's my understanding that the Planning and Zoning Committee can recommend the nominee, but that the city council makes the final vote. So just wanted to let you know that I have a background in social work with a bachelor's degree. Gives me extensive skills in communication, conflict resolution, resource allocation, and my career over the past twenty years has been entirely in nonprofit and government roles. My current job is to maintain the quality standards of the documentation of my entire organization to meet standards for our accreditation yearly. I'm also keenly aware of the Roberts Rule of Orders, having served on Brighter and Morrow's Board of Directors for the past four years, which serves the childhood cancer community in Rochester and the local area beyond. I think I have the skills to be an impartial and dedicated member of the Planning and Zoning Committee. And while I respect the recommendation brought forward by the P and Z members, I just wanted to make sure that the council is aware that I am still an option for this and I would be a willing member.
All right, thank you. Second call for public forum.
Hi, I'm Annie Johnson. Address is four seventy-five River Park Road Southeast Orinoco. I just wanted to come and talk to the council tonight, just about some concerns that I have about representation on the council to the citizens of the city. I know as council members, you all hold a really heavy responsibility to be the voice and represent the citizens of Orinoco. And for the most part, what I've seen in watching the YouTube links and being at meetings, council members that represent us at the current time by far have done a nice job of representing us as far as presence at meetings, preparation for meetings, and trying to represent the community in the best way possible, I believe. However, having said that, there is a council member currently on the board that has had significant absences since election back in November. Absences to general meetings that are required, to special meetings that are required. And a significant number of absences enough to the point, as a citizen, it makes me concerned that this person is representing us, not being present, not being prepared. And then this person can show up at a meeting and have a vote. So I don't know what can be done about that. I don't know what types of expectations there are. I would imagine that there's something, and I haven't, I could probably look this up, but I would imagine there's something written as far as you must meet certain expectations and not miss. I don't know, maybe this individual has some personal things going on that are, you know, keeping them away from meetings, and if that's the case, then those have been excused absences, then my whole point is moot, but I don't think that's the case. So I would just like people to be very aware of that, especially when we have important things tonight, like votes for committees going forth that have a big impact on us as citizens.
Final call for public forum. Okay, we'll close public forum at six forty-four. Your packet is a a memo from the city administrator. FYI, but is there anything you want to?
The only thing that I would add is we have Mark Keen, right? Am I saying that right? Okay. I thought I corrected myself, okay. And then Tilly's is present as well. Oh, and it's G A J A G. Missed typing there. They're present in the front row. Meaning, and South by Southwest Brewery. No, but I can tell you also that they have Hilltop has submitted the gathering permit. So that's been submitted and paid for too, which is purely administrative, but just so you know that that goes along with that. That event.
The first one is not present.
Diane Oslund.
So there's no action by the council at this time? On these items?
Well, there are, there are soon actions that are needed.
Attachments or something to go over?
Joe, I'm glad you're here. You can speak to. Council would have to accept the petition. Sorry, I think. The petition for hooking up to municipal sanitary sewer when it's available for that parcel. That one is adjacent and abutting in the city. Are you familiar with that parcel?
I didn't see the submittal, but I am aware generally of what's going on in Cedar Woodlands. Saw a couple of comments, I guess.
Two sisters wanting to do that screw.
Right.
And I know Rowland, the mayor has been as well.
Yeah, the development agreement precludes connection to the city's system until, I think, twenty-five. And all of the sanitary sewer for the development, when it comes to one location, and then it gets pumped to the it gets pumped to the drainage field, and so there's no real way to split the flows, I don't think. And so if we're gonna take one future parcel, we'd probably take them all. At least that would be my initial thought without making things more complex than they maybe we need to be. I don't know how quickly this is gonna proceed, but we should check the development agreement. That twenty twenty-five date will be here reasonably quick, maybe as quick as, you know, reasonably they can get that facility built and constructed, and maybe the whole thing can come in at that point in time, which would make sense. That's what we had intended. And just for the council's knowledge, so there is a stub to that facility. It's just a matter of extending that pipe another probably thirty feet and making that connection. And then, of course, the existing lift station would have to be decommissioned as well as a community waste treatment facility, but that's really an obligation that's in the development agreement for the developer.
That's just number one.
Right, there's no.
That is what we're talking about, right?
Yes.
Oslund.
I don't have an address or I don't have anything.
Yes. So it's.
I have no, I have no information. Is there an address that I can just, so I can get my bearings?
So the Cedar Woodlands three development, the, the gas station, like.
The plan, and that they haven't submitted the plans for approval or.
Gas and Go.
Application.
Yes, but yeah, that's, that's a commercial development, and so as you go to the south, I'm sorry, as you go to the north of Gas and Go, there's some commercial lots that are available for development there. They just haven't been developed. And so I, I'm assuming that that's where this is.
That's right. It's on the northwest corner of that commercial lot, and they're first thing, I mean, they're working with engineers, but we haven't seen any preliminary plat or anything yet, but they are just asking to be included in with this petition to join the water system, the sewer system.
Right, and you won't see a plat, probably. The area's platted.
Yeah.
It's just development of one or two lots or whatever they would choose to do. So I'm assuming that that is what's being proposed. So a few complications, a few things that really need to work through, and we really need to review the development agreement. And if we're gonna do something outside the, what was agreed upon within the agreement, then there's gotta be an amendment to that. If we can wait, or what memory serves is that twenty twenty-five date, then that probably isn't a reason to do anything. But we do have depth, capacity, and we're set up for it. It just would need to be executed.
The timing of it.
And, and the timing, of course, yes.
And they still, this is all new. They haven't come to planning and zoning or anything. It's.
No.
Okay.
No, it's just the heads up.
It's based on time of spring, if. Where I understand, maybe. For sure.
And then the second one is also a verbal petition from Mr. Keen to, he has twenty acres plus or minus that lies in the township not abutting in the city. But the, the line is coming right up in Minnesota, so he's wanting to hook up as well.
So clarification on that too. So that is in the township. It is adjacent to the force main pipe, pressure pipe that lift station one uses to pump wastewater to wastewater treatment facility. And so since it is a pressure pipe, you just can't connect to it without doing a little bit of analysis and figuring out if indeed, because there's pressure in that pipe and it varies, and so if you add another pipe system to that, and that's pretty near the high point of the system where the pressures might be the highest, you can have unexpected results. And so there needs to be a little bit of modeling done, a little thought put into that, so that we can look at that and indeed determine if that connection can be made. We don't know anything about the flows. Maybe the flows are really small. Probably they are. But we need to look at that and figure out where the connection would be wanted, or most palatable in terms of the system. And again, that the pressures wouldn't cause any issues. My instincts say that it's probably viable, but it might not be as simple as people think. The third thing is, is if we're gonna serve somebody outside of the city limits, that gets to be a little bit of a concern because they're not subject to the city ordinances, okay? And so it can be done. But it's not common, and the city attorney might have some concerns about that. What I have seen in other areas, not saying that you should do this or could do this, but typically, if you're gonna serve somebody that's outside your jurisdiction, we are in Orinoco Estates, right? They would have to, we'd have to have an agreement that basically says, you know, we have the right to monitor your wa- your wastewater flows, that, you know, we get to tell you how the connection's gonna be made, that you'll pay your bill, that we have the right to come in and inspect things if, if we have a concern, all the things that are kinda subject to, subject to the ordinance. So that simple agreement would have to be needed. And then, of course, they need to essentially pay their fair share of the infrastructure costs, and then also pay a monthly bill, just like everybody else in town would. So so complications when you live outside the city limits that, that need to be worked through, and the council needs to consider.
Do you know where it lands in the future land use plan? What, where this property lands?
It is in the M one.
Did you wanna say anything, Mark?
Markeen.
All along, along that.
One oh four two six twenty at the Avenue Northwest, Orinoco.
Along fifty-two.
No, just this block.
That's block, okay.
That's probably. My idea with that twenty acres is I don't know if you're aware of it, I sold the horse arena. That transfers next month. I'm gonna build a storage shed up on this twenty acres. I've been in contact with Fitzgerald. GQ. They don't see any reason why we couldn't hook into that line. Like you were saying, to check some pressures, yes. Jason thought about that too, but he didn't think it'd be a big deal. And like he mentioned, he says, the plan is outside the city. It is serving another business outside the city. So it should be offered for me also without any complications, that I should be allowed to hook up. And what I wanna do here is I just wanna put one building to start with. I would put more if you had your water extended. I would annex it into the city ASAP. But it could be ten, twenty years before you get water out there. Who knows? You know, you got a, you got a forty or seventy acre section sitting there that is for sale, but who will pay that kind of money to put a development in there and you get your water going, it'll be five, ten years. Well, I'm not gonna sit out there with no water in my shed for five, ten years. I'll drill a well. And if the septic works, as soon as you get water there, I'll abandon the well, and I'll turn the twenty into the city sewer, or city. It's a win-win for you guys, because I can put probably, I gotta draw in. And I have a lot of customers that would like to come out, but we do one at a time and see what happens. After I sold the horse arena, everybody comes out of the woodwork and wants a place to put a shop. They're short of that. And I could put almost ten nice buildings under ten thousand square foot piece out there on that piece of property. So it'd be a good deal for the city with the taxes. And it's just a sand, it's just an old sand pit sitting there. That was, it was sanded and then converted into whatever it is. Now, it don't produce hardly any corn or anything, so it's that's why I'm here asking for, to see if you want to. If not, I'm gonna put it on a holding tank. I talked to the county. I have a meeting with them on Thursday morning. And I can get by with that.
You're, you're probably talking about pretty small flows and Marcus bathroom.
That's all we're gonna have, Tony and I. It's just our storage. Yep, for me up there to start with, and then we're gonna put another storage building up. And that don't need a bathroom. It's just for, you know, I got twenty-five, thirty boats and motorhomes sitting in that shed right now over there, and they're gonna want another place next fall. So that building won't be, yeah, we're only gonna have a, to start with, just a bathroom and maybe wash your car too. That'd be it. But for the future, I'd like to get it all done, get it here while the money's there, and we can put the underground in, have it all set up. It'll be a nice addition to the city when you can give us water. The sewer's right there.
These storage buildings, they need bathrooms as well, or just the one for the one side, the whole side?
No, when you got a storage system like that, they just bring their car, they leave, they're done, or their truck or whatever.
Your office.
I never see them for six months. They drop them off, put them in, they're gone, lock them up. And Tony and I want a bathroom in ours, of course. When we're working out there and working on cars and doing whatever, so we would just have one toilet area in the first building that we put up.
So it sounds like the holding tank might be the best alternative at this point, if you're wanting to just from an expense standpoint.
It is, but if I'm not gonna grow, I'll put a drain field in, then I won't annex it into the city. See if I gotta spend a hundred grand. I might as well put up the other buildings and leave it right in the township. But I figured your sewer's right there, and for the growth, the way Orinoco's coming, you can only come south, and we're right across the road. So I figured in my eyes, in my mind, the way I think, maybe I think different to you guys, it's a no-brainer, you know? We hook up, we got the pipes there, sell off some lots, get some people coming to town, and I'll drill the well to service it until you get water. And we'd abandon the well and hook up to yours and annex it into the city.
I guess from a council's perspective, it's all pretty new to all of us, so we there's no question, we welcome the, the possibilities of it. It's down the road as far as city water, that's a, there's probably other things that'll have to happen to get city water out there, of course, but as far as any type of growth. But it is in the M one. And that's what you're rezoning it to?
Yeah.
Township, right?
Yeah, township, we're going to that, and then they got all of copies of everything drawn up and everything showing in multiple buildings and all that, how it's all gonna lay out out there for the future. I mean, with those on Friday morning or Thursday morning at nine o'clock. But I thought I'd bring it up to you to get your heads going, see if you can make it work. I have no issue paying a fee to hook up per the water meter or whatever you do, but I know we can have some more businesses out there for you. Like I say, if we get it and do a nice job on the sewer and stuff, we could afford probably to dig a, dig a big enough well and annex it into the city without the water, because with that section right there, I'm not gonna sit dormant and not do anything with my twenty acres when it's just a hop, skip, and a jump, and somebody doesn't wanna do, you know, can hold the whole story up, so.
Thank you for sharing with us.
The next one, Tilly's new owner. Is requesting I am so sorry that, that there are no attachments to this. But she, her, she wants to do this grand opening on May twentieth with live band. The application stated nine to one. But I know, so our ordinance allows up until eleven for noise. So so council would have to take action to authorize anything beyond what the current ordinance allows for. Heather, did you wanna say anything or?
I'll answer any questions. I'm just looking for the gathering permit to be granted and to modify the noise ordinance. I'd like the, the music to be able to play the band until midnight and why they're taking down some background music, and by the time I get everybody out of there, it would be one.
So the gathering permit piece, again, can be administratively handled if it's all within, you know, code requirements. This one is before council because it exceeds what?
I think we'd probably have to notify the residents that that would be going on, you know, before we would do the variance and make sure it's okay with them. Any complaints, that would be there. The other thing too, do we need to have any security that there is in that for being outside on, you know, in a tent-type situation? Have you looked at that?
Cali out there. I've had, I've had another grand opening when I had it. I had Homestead County out there. That's not an issue for us at all. And what this is, is I'm selling her the business of the building. It is our grand opening in the twenty-third year. So she's gonna carry it on for the next twenty or thirty years, whatever. So, you know, it's not gonna be an every-night deal. So there'll be a security guard there all, all right? Yep, well, until one o'clock, yeah. Yep. Yep, no, we anticipated having Homestead County there. It's always a good thing.
So how many neighbors would be involved with that? Did you look at?
They'll all be there.
So I'm just saying, 'cause I mean, we've got a, there's.
No, I don't.
That's probably true.
I think we just say we'll be. If we notify, you just post it on the website and them.
Okay, off of that, then?
Like we, like we would normally do. I don't think you have to notify individuals personally, but.
I have no problem either if I get addresses to mail out something or fire. I don't know this day and age, if I go knock on the door and introduce myself, they would open up the door to me, but I'm all friendly neighbor to let them know what's going on, give them a little heads up on it.
I mean, ultimately, I think it's a great idea, you know, for a grand opening, and I think that that's fantastic, you know, to want to do that, okay, so I think that that's very positive for the community.
Well, I'm sure it ain't gonna be her only one she's gonna have, and you know, she has trouble
No, I don't.
with the next, next one, you know. For this one, there probably will be trouble to get that next time.
Saturday night, I think midnight's just fine. I would make, I would make a motion to approve.
And I would second that for.
To approve the midnight with um, background music playing during teardown quieter than I would assume a band would be, that's just normal.
And I will have a tent, so depending on the weather, if the curtains are down, that will muffle the noise as well.
Any other comments?
No.
So midnight would be the?
Band would be finished at midnight?
And and then the rest till clean up and, okay. Right, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ours? It's the same sign, approved? Great, look forward to it.
Be fun.
Thank you. Um, and the next one is an application for liquor license uh, for a new business that's coming into the city, um downtown here. Um, Jeff and Julie Green are here, so.
Hi, my name is Jeff Green, and my wife is Julie Green here in front. And uh, we just purchased uh, Forty Avenue, Minnesota Avenue, building the big shed. And we also purchased a lot that runs up to the post office. Um, we currently run two uh, very successful businesses in Rochester, uh, one is Shades of Green, one is Ninety-Nine Giggles. One's on Second Street, and the other one is down in uh, the Kayler Grand Hotel. Um, we just recently uh, built a house out here about uh, eight years ago, uh, we love the community, our address is fourteen ninety-five River Hill Court, northwest above Kings Park. And uh, this is looking at more of our retirement dream to, eventually we wanna consolidate everything out of Rochester and move on to Orinoco, the public community. And uh, I'm looking at possibly, uh, I'd like to request a reserve and a liquor license to help me to know if I can get that or not, uh, help with the build-out. Uh, which I would start as early as uh, this spring here, I want to start doing the build-out. Um, anticipating uh, opening in uh, probably the early, early twenty twenty-five year. Um, so, but in order for me to start my build-out and come up with a master plan, um, obviously I want to have all my ducks in a row to to know what we can do. Um, this, this bar would be a daytime bar, we're not, we don't want no nightlife. Um, we're not that kind of uh, business, um. If any of you are familiar with like uh, uh, Nelson Cheese over in Nelson, Wisconsin, we want to do some kind of a theme like that, uh, put a restaurant, uh, you know, not a, not a full bowl of restaurant, just uh, maybe uh, anywhere from uh, uh, fire brick pizza ovens to uh, charcuterie boards to serve with wine and cocktails. And uh, our business would probably not be open later than eight o'clock. So it's more, I, I call it more of a daytime bar, you know, restaurant for people to get out. Uh, we want to cater to the, obviously the kids, we want ice cream. Uh, we're talking possibly coffee. Um and a boutique store, so it's uh, it's gonna be a comment, I mean, I, I mean, we're we're anywhere from uh, uh, we want to do a, a, a huge Minnesota theme because of Minnesota Avenue, um. She, she's, obviously knows more of the, the details of the boutique and the retail, we want furniture and, and uh, um, and we've had Shades of Green on Second for twenty-two years, and Ninety-Nine Giggles is going on twelve, so, and we had a hair slot before that, so we're, I mean, we've been in business in Rochester for over thirty years, so, um, about to bring a business and get to downtown Orinoco
Yeah.
into a village town, or however you wanna call it.
Great, okay, the only question I have for city staff, you may have looked at this already, is, is the number of, of on-sale liquor licenses for a city our size, four, okay, so we have three, okay. All right?
Good. It's a great idea.
Thank you.
Glad to have you guys.
Thank you.
So that would make a motion to approve.
And so just can I get this straight, like the, the approval is to reserve, and then they would have, they would have to go through the approval with the state, is that how that?
Yes.
And then if they're not approved, then that, we get that, that opens back up?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
But it has to have city approval before they can move to the next step.
Or the liquor license.
And has there been?
So much for motions for?
Yes, to approve.
And has there been any other requests? As of yet?
Well, one of the, one of the things
Excuse me.
One of the things with liquor licenses is that you have to have an actual, actual address.
Okay.
So, in his case, he's got that, it's, so, it'll, it'll go to that address specifically in their name.
Um, I make a motion to approve.
Oh, second that. All right, any other comments? Yeah, that'd be great for the downtown and Orinoco and residents around Orinoco too, so, thanks.
Thank you.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ours? Approved?
Will you deliver to City Hall?
Sure.
Coffee or wine?
Maybe you have to stay open after council.
Yeah, you'd have, you'd have a few customers for sure.
Next one?
And the next one is um, Hilltop Camping and RV is doing a uh, an event on May sixth, that's a Saturday, the donations are all going to Make-A-Wish Foundation. Um, so they are, this event then would be catered um for the bar, the liquor sales by self, by self-planning, for the brewery, they've applied for the temporary on-sale liquor license, which is for one to four days. So there again.
What's it, what, oh, May sixth, okay, yeah.
Okay, we don't have a time on that, so there's nothing that's gonna be after it?
Oh, no, it doesn't affect the time, I think it was five to nine or something like that.
During, so it's during regular business hours?
Yep.
Okay, I make a motion to approve that. May sixth is a
Saturday.
Um this is a great event, especially with it going to Make-A-Wish, and we should do our, we should really help them promote this throughout the community.
And um, I talked to Darren, Darren today, and their Make-A-Wish is already looking for a recipient. Um, now, so, so it could very well be that on May sixth, they're actually
We have, we have some people with some connections that might know of somebody worth it as being a recipient. So, if they're yeah.
All right, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ours? It's approved?
Thank you.
Orinoco County Sheriff Department.
Brett, the whole office with, no, I'm just kidding.
Oh, not quite. Mayor, Council, uh, Kevin Torgerson of the Orinoco County Sheriff's Office, it's uh, it's got two things for you. Uh, nothing you'll have to make any decisions on tonight, so that's, that's a good thing. Um, but uh, we've had a lot of movement in our office, we, uh, some retirements start happening that are part of our process at this point. Um, but one retirement, it was announced, I think in like in November, and then a couple other guys said, hey, it sounds like a good idea, it worked. Uh, so with three retirements, we've had as of today, there could be more yet, because we're not done. Twenty-one moves uh, within the office, just, just on the law enforcement side. So uh, two of the moves are here, and I want you to get to, get to recognize faces and no names. Um, so uh, the first retirement that we had was Terry Waleski, who was our chief deputy uh, for the last eight plus years, and on the law enforcement side. And he was your main contact for city for con, contracts and basic business-related type things. So uh, his replacement, Brian Howard. And, come on up here, boy, don't be shy, I thought you were buying me. Um, so uh, Chief Deputy Brian Howard lets you, he'll tell you a little bit about himself, and then he'll introduce Captain Kelly Lee, who is our new captain of our patrol division, so. Uh, Brian, there you go.
Thank you. Hello, everybody, I am Brian Howard, like the sheriff said, um, I have worked for Homestead County for a little over twenty-nine years. I started in patrol division, of course, worked there for a while, was a K-9 handler for fifteen years. Um, in two thousand seven, I was promoted to sergeant. Sergeant from two thousand seven through two thousand thirteen, when I was promoted to captain. At the time it was called the Drug Task Force, I started the Drug Task Force for a year and a half. And when the sheriff was elected in twenty fifteen, he appointed me as chief deputy of detention services. So for the past eight years, I've been supervising our jail. And like the sheriff said, when Chief Deputy Waleski retired, I moved to the law enforcement side as a chief deputy on that. Looking forward to working with you and getting back up to Orinoco a little bit more, and I'll introduce Captain Kelly Lee.
Good evening, uh, like they said, I'm Kelly Lee, and I'm the newly promoted patrol captain, uh, mayor, we've, we've known one another for a few years. I don't see any other familiar faces, but I do know the mayor. Um, been with the county for about sixteen years, I started in oh-seven, been in law enforcement about uh, twenty-six years or so, uh, right around there. Um, but like I said, been with the county since oh-seven, uh, been assigned to the patrol division, um, court security, transport, kind of a utility, kind of a catch-all deputy, we need help here today, that's where you're going spot. Um, I've made a couple rotations through our training division, both as a deputy and as uh, most recently the sergeant. Um, the sheriff promoted me to sergeant back in two thousand nineteen, and then just here in January promoted me to captain. So uh, like they said, you know, I'm gonna be a patrol captain, uh, who you guys may know as, uh, previously as Captain Chris Wallace. Um, so I've got Chris's same office, his same phone number, all that, um, but I'm the new guy replacing him, so I'm gonna try to get up here and get out of the office a little bit, and you know, come through, swing by, say hi, and check on everything and whatever, but I will give you my business cards, as will uh, Chief Howard. But uh, anything you guys need, problems, questions, concerns, please don't be afraid to reach out to us, that's what we're there for. Uh, we can't fix things if we don't know about them. Um, and either, you know, call us or email, we respond pretty timely to either one, so. But it's nice to meet all of you, and Mayor, it's nice to see you again.
You too.
So.
Congratulations to both of you.
Thank you. And the cards would be appreciated, too. Thank you. Yeah, so unless you have any questions, I'll give you some business cards and good to go. All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So uh, Kelly, you didn't say why you go there. It's sometimes kind of important, because, you know.
Gold rush, sir.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I know these things. I knew it was all good. Um, so while Brian's handing the cards out, then the last thing is, uh, is a contract year, so every other year we uh, open up our contracts and renew them uh, for a two-year cycle uh, with each of our contract cities, we, uh, we're in Stewartville, Byron, Dover, and Yoda, Orinoco, and then three of the four townships that circle uh, city of Rochester, so, um, I would expect we, this week has been absolutely insane trying to handle all these new changes that are happening, we just announced, I think eleven movements today of these twenty-one.
Awesome.
Um, so lots of, and that just created more movement, because people were in one place, go to another, now we gotta fill that, you know, the backfill site, so. Uh, there's a lot of things happening in the office right now, so it'll be a little bit, uh, give us a week or so to get kind of settled. And then uh, for sure, Brian will be back in touch to uh, work on the contract and see if there's anything you want different or new, you know, whatever, uh, that's, that's what it's for, to have us work through that again, so. Um, other than that, yeah, I think the new business in town is exciting, that's pretty awesome. Uh, we're always looking forward to the gold rush every year, that's a, that's a big deal, and, and creates a lot of excitement up here. Liberty Chambers doing a great job for us, so we don't want to forget Heavy. Call the chief chambers, he told me when he comes, I come into his, this is his turf.
It is.
Speaking of quality's here, so. We'll go through that.
You guys.
But uh, yeah.
He's brave as well.
Um, but anyway, we uh, we really like our relationship here, and I hope it's the same, and and again, we'll do whatever we can to help out, it's a, it's an interesting world out there right now, and um, just a real taste of it, Brian was on the detention side as uh, as he mentioned, you know, there was ninety-nine detention deputies and staff. And then on the law enforcement side, there's ninety Five, thank you, five and a half. So nine, hundred and ninety-four and a half total, the half person works in our training center down by Fleet Farm South, uh, Fleet Farm on the south side. So uh, it's a big office right now, and uh, you know, our bigger challenges, obviously, are drugs and and the challenges that come that way and overdoses and, you know, and all those other things that are related to that, so. Um, anyway. All right, so if any questions from anybody, we'll get out of your way.
Thank you.
Well, thanks for coming up. Thanks for your service, too. Well, you're welcome, thank you, good to see you. And the best hot dogs in county here, if you're on we get it first Tuesday of August, right? Yeah. Be back. Um, Sergeant Chambers, did you have any comments about the incident report or what?
Yeah. Yeah. You got a letter in here, so.
Easy.
Um, it, they look pretty good, because you, we're not having the uh, the big ones, the assaults, there's none on here. Burglaries, um, none, thefts, there's one theft, so, um, things are going well up here. It seems uh, like, so we don't have those, those, kind of those indicators that there's problems, so. Um, the one thing I'll say is, we've had issues in the county with um, some, some of our storage units getting broken into, it's just been kind, we haven't had any of those issues um, that I'm aware of up here, um, and I, I spoke to the owner of uh, Orinoco Self Storage there, and he doesn't have anything to report, so we'll keep an eye on it, and uh, there's issues, we'll deal with it, so.
We had mentioned last time about checking to see if you can get that gate closed at night, uh, many luck with that?
Yeah, well, it doesn't appear that he wants to do that at this point, because it's snow, it was, it was snowed in, so. Um, but when I talked to him, he was out, out of town on vacation, and we were just text messaging, so when he's I think he's gonna be back this coming up week, and I'll reach out to him and kind of it, it may be one of those things where he might not do unless they start having issues, but uh.
You know, I mean, once it's there, though, the whole thing is, you know, that can be further where you don't have to wait for an issue to happen.
Right, yep, yep.
Proactive of it, you know, so.
Yep. Um, uh, yeah, I, I uh, would think that he'd want to do that, but I, we do see some of the storage units leave them open so their customers can get in and out more, you know, throughout the night, so. Um, like you said, he was out of town, so we didn't actually speak, we text messaged, and he kind of told me there's no issues at this point, and then follow up with him somewhere on that, too, so.
The other thing is with that keypad that he's got there, if anybody wants to come in, they've got their code that there is, and they can punch in their code and come and go, so.
Yeah.
It could still be open twenty-four hours a day, but it would just keep everybody else out, that.
Yeah, and we see that, you know, depending on how often they recycle those codes and things, you know, people can you know, get access after they've been there too, so it is, it is something that they have to keep up with as far as uh, revoking access with those codes and how they do that, so. Uh, the one thing I can say, he's got a really good camera system up there. Um, there's cameras everywhere, I don't know if you guys have been through there. Um, so I, I'm not sure how sophisticated his fence is, is at this point, but definitely, yeah, from my perspective, if he locks it, it's gonna save trouble.
One thing on our agenda later on, uh, you won't need to stay around for a bit, we're, we're aware that we'll be we'll have a discussion about reducing speed limits
Okay.
on residential streets, so, um, just give you a heads up on something maybe coming there. Not this meeting, maybe at the next meeting, but.
Twenty-five, or?
Most likely, yeah, so. Okay, just a heads up on that, so.
Sounds good, I appreciate it.
Okay, on that, um, since we're talking about that just briefly, um, on the, the traffic stops that you have, is that for speeding mostly for the seven that you had?
Uh, you know what, I'm not sure, typically we'll see that it's uh, speeding, um. I, I don't have, I don't have a printout. It doesn't tell me what they're all for. But I would say most of our traffic stops in town are, are going to be for speeding more often than not. Obviously, there's, there's the equipment violations and things like that too, but from my experience, they're mostly for speeding. A lot of people go over that thirty miles an hour, so it's.
And then you were looking where we do have the twenty mile an hour posted. And I think last time you said it was tough for you to watch that area.
It's, it, it's tough for us to, to, I mean, obviously, we can drive up and down that hill. But it's difficult for us to sit there and, because we're in the way. If we're on the road there, we're in the way of traffic. So we're feeding traffic. So it's one of those things where we can drive up and down. But, you know, sitting there and running traffic enforcement like we like to do to get speeders, it's hard there. It's a difficult spot. Have you guys been getting any recent issues or any reports on, on that or?
I haven't heard recently, but.
Nothing recently. I think it's just. We may want to look at the placement of that twenty mile an hour radar sign because right now it's right at.
Bottom of the.
Speed limit, so we'll work with public works on that.
Sure, yep.
That's the only thing I see, but.
And you have two of those, right? You have two of those?
Yes, the other one's out on West Center Road, West Center Street. All right, there's nothing else. Thank you. Thanks.
We appreciate you.
Well, I appreciate you guys. Have a good night.
You too.
We have a prosecution services agreement with the county attorney that renewed the two-year contracts. I make a motion we approve. Twenty-three, twenty, twenty-four services, services agreement. That can. Comments? None? I'll listen favor. So you can probably say aye.
Aye.
Approved. Water and sewer. March fourteenth meeting notes. And with that, Joe, if you want to do.
Yeah, so lots of good information in sewer water committee meeting notes. I assume that you guys had a chance to look at those. In terms of the wastewater treatment plant, item number two of the update. Give you a construction update first. So construction continues to proceed. Stop continues to work out there about four days a week and the subs are out there essentially five days. Making good progress on the admin building. For example, the admin building, sheet rock is essentially done, painting is mostly done, tiles going on the floors. You know, all the doors are in, windows are up. It's really taking shape, siding's on. Oh, and the roofing is maybe starting later this week. So that building is, is coming together real quick. Contractors also, as of this week, started concrete cores at the SPR. Remember, we have about a month worth of work there. Like suspended concrete cores when it got cold. Little bit nicer, a little bit more advantageous, a little less heating required to tent and, and, and complete those pores. So they'll be pushing on that probably into April or into, probably mid-April, I would guess. And so then that will continue. And then in addition to that, there's miscellaneous electrical, mechanical and, and piping work going on and really all the. So the contractor continues to push and make some progress. The most concerning thing or the most pressing thing that we want to touch base with on the council's item number three. Last council meeting, we talked about MCC. Equipment and that being delivered in July. And we thought that was a concern. We are also. The contractor also expressed a concern about the switchgear and the panel boards. But they didn't have a delivery date. Well, we got that delivery date. And they're indicating that that delivery date won't even be in two thousand twenty-three. They're indicating that it's in two thousand twenty-four. In fact, October of two thousand twenty-four. So the switchgear and panel boards are essentially. The equipment necessary to take the, the power from the transformer, get it into the building. And then route it to the pumps and the blowers and the lights and everything that needs to go. And so the manufacturer of this, Eaton, is indicating that. You know, there are supply chain issues and they're having trouble getting components. Just like everybody. They, 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 they claim that there are component issues, so circuit boards, chips. Different resins, the big breakers, different things that they need to bring this together. And that's one of the things that has led to the long lead time. That said, you look at the list of all of the other equipment is on time or pretty darn close to on time. And there's a lot of chips and components and things in those. So. Obviously, that's a concern. First and foremost, we're trying to work with Eaton to see what can be done to speed up their process. You know, the project was initially bid in October of two thousand twenty-one. It was supposed to be substantially complete in October of two thousand twenty-three. So that's two full years. The shop drawings for all of this equipment were submitted by the contractor. And approved in August, on August first, in fact, of two thousand twenty-two. So it's been a good while. And don't get me wrong, this stuff is, is fairly sophisticated. I think the shop drawings for the MCC and the switchboard and all that stuff was twelve hundred pages. So they're complicated components, but, and, and the demand for these facilities, for these, these things are pretty high right now. And I think personally, based on the research I've done, I think that's the issue. There's a lot of demand. I'm sure there are supply chain issues. And my sense is we're maybe not at the top of the food chain in terms of. The contracts that they have to fill. And so. We have reached out to our legislators, both state and federal, seeing if they, they can. On our behalf, make some contacts and hopefully convince the people that maybe we should be a higher priority than, than they placed on us. You know, we do have some options in terms of the contract and whatnot. About these types of delays, it's concerning. Hopefully, we don't have to go down that road. There is also a secondary option that we're kind of looking at with the contractor in terms of temporarily. You know, using substitute equipment, temporary substitute equipment that the contractors might have on the hand or can get on hand until the. Specified equipment comes in. This would be smaller equipment because obviously the electrical components are, are essentially oversized for the initial load. But the load grows and grows and grows. And so you need, need to essentially do that. But maybe for the first series of months, we can, but get by with less. Temporary facilities, temporary facilities with less capacity is what I'm trying to say. And so we're looking at that option with the contract too. So. You know, we're, we're pursuing a few avenues to mitigate this delay the best we can, but the delay is concerning. Unfortunately, I, I don't have any other. We don't have any control over the, those pieces and I'm, I'm frustrated with anybody in the room. I don't know what I know. So there is a letter in the packet that, packet did, or the letter did go out. Riley and I worked together on that.
And the letter to Senator Klobuchar's outreach director, Senator Smith, Tina Smith's outreach director. And also Congressman Finstad, reached out to him and also Governor Wallace. I did follow up today with phone calls. Except for, I'm pretty sure that everybody's received it, the three to four, three of the four people have received the letter. And they were going to review it with their legislative teams and/or the senator or congressman. Senator Klobuchar, the gentleman said that he would try to get back with me by the end of this week or early next week. But the one question that comes and comes up in the discussion with the, with the legislative assistance is that what exactly do you want us to do? And our response is that in the letter, you notice it has Eaton's email, phone number, contact person. So. The main response is just call him, send him a letter, express the urgency and ask to move up the delivery date of the components. And so. We'll see. It's not for lack of trying. Joe put together a great letter and. So we'll see. In Governor Wall's case, I talked to assistant in the Lieutenant Governor's office and they were going to review it internally as well and get back with me. So.
So we are.
For those efforts, I appreciate it.
Yeah, we are meeting internally on this, trying to look at that scenario and what loads we can or can't deal with in the short term. And then also, we do have a meeting with Eaton on Monday. And we'll learn a little bit more at that point. They were looking at options from their perspective on, on that delivery date and what, what they could or couldn't do. So there are a, a few balls up in the air, if you will, or a few, you know, things in the works. We continue to coordinate with them and communicate and hopefully. We'll be able to have at least some positive results.
Is there, there's a warranty on the project, right? That goes through, if we do. The lesser flow rates, is that going to jeopardize the warranty that we have on the program? Or can we extend the warranty then so that when we get the, get into full operation and be able to still have that warranty?
That is an excellent question that the contractor is concerned about. His scenario is, or his big, his concern frankly, is that. He builds this facility and we have everything but that component and all that equipment sits for a year and doesn't work. And then he does, the warranty doesn't start until substantial completion is achieved. And operation starts. And so that is very specific to the contract. And then your two-year warranty starts after substantial completion. Well, the components are in, substantial completion, my mind hasn't started. And so then your warranty doesn't start until all your stuff is there.
But if you have the substitute parts, then.
Well, that's, that's a pretty gray area, right? I mean, because everything else is working. For example, the UV system is working. And so. I guess we'd have to work that through with the contractor, but that is part of their incentive. First of all, they, they don't, they didn't see this delay coming. They don't want to have this delay. They don't want to hang around and come back in a year. You know, they, they don't want that, much less they don't want to deal with the warranty issues. And, and having to extend that with all their suppliers and manufacturers and it kind of gets to be a pain in the butt. So there's some incentive from their perspective to work through this.
As Tom turned around and looked at another.
Yes.
Right now, okay, so anything come back with that? No?
No better options.
One question just come to mind, you know, we talked about the controls, but same time that contracted the controls and lift stations too. Is that part of the delay package too? The components that go into the lift station?
Not that I'm aware of.
Are the transformers or are there going to be any time for the lift station?
We just had a meeting with Peoples today and yes, they are on time. We, Jeff went through with Fitzgerald and Peoples. They went through each site and talked about. They've got to bring G-Face power to each one of those sites. And so we've been kind of working through that with them. But they have all of the materials and now it's just logistics. So this line's going to go here, that transformer's going to go there. This can happen, you know. So that was the purpose of today's meeting with them and that, they have the components. They have ordered them well in advance and that, that is great because that's a problem too.
Yeah, that's.
So that, that piece of the puzzle isn't a concern.
And the only thing else, and, and I know we had to put everything that's in there, but when we read the letter. It, it goes along with the project being bid in fall of twenty twenty. And the approval being of August first, twenty twenty-two. You know, and they're looking at, I mean, it just, it's something that jumps out.
Does it say twenty, twenty? It should have been.
Yeah, it says Ornoco's project was bid in fall of twenty twenty. Okay, shop drawings were.
Should have been twenty-one. That's, that's my fault. I think it's twenty twenty. The construction really started in twenty-two.
Anyway, that's just what jumped out at me when I looked at that, if they were looking at it saying. Well, we had two years before they turned around and placed the order that there was for the switchgear. And that's just.
Well, that is twenty-one. Is, is that the final letter?
Yeah.
I see.
Yeah, that's not the final letter.
Oh, is there a different letter than there was for?
Yeah, you had March twentieth, I saw in one today.
Because I see this approved in August first, twenty twenty-two.
What paragraph are you in?
The last paragraph under.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Okay, oh.
That should be the fall of twenty-one that it was bid.
So there was a subsequent letter dated March twentieth, if I'm not mistaken. So.
This is, the, the Ryan signed the letters, so I'm, I wonder if I caught that. I might have caught that.
I.
And that may have been.
This is, this is a, this is.
March twenty-first.
This isn't the version that finally went out. Yeah, this was being circulated amongst Ryland and I.
On the sixteenth, yeah.
Sunny, sunny, just for review, so.
Oh, it was different when it was the sixteenth, or was it the same letter dated than?
March twentieth.
March twentieth is the letter that went out. Draft.
Yeah. And just for the record.
I think I did catch that and change that. I. I, I'd have to check.
Well, I mean, that's just what jumped out at me and I'm going, well, if I was looking at this as a legislature, I'm going, what happened to two years?
Okay, so I think it's just the draft went into the packet because the letters went out one day, yesterday.
Yeah. And just for the record, we, we should have. Council action supporting the mayor having sent letters out.
Oh, good. Thanks. Not sure what you're asking for here. Yeah, I was, I was representing the council and the city for sending these letters out. So, you know, it's just by the mayor signing of a letter too, so.
Right.
Well, I approve or motion to approve.
Thank you.
In hindsight. Let's, ready to legislatures, legislators on our behalf at any time. I'm doing that work. It is, it is appreciated.
I'm gonna say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Anything else, Joe? You're thrilled?
Yeah, we'll jump to Fitzgerald unless council has any questions. Of course, there's a pay request in the packet for stop. As well as Fitzgerald. You can see those. Happy to answer any questions about those. The Fitzgerald update, the last month has been pretty good to Fitzgerald. They've had reasonable weather and they completed a fair amount of work, especially in the lift stations. So right now, all the lift stations are in the ground. The only thing that they continue to work on is lift station one B and that might be in the ground. I haven't, I didn't check. But. Lift station structures are in the ground. Pump rails, piping, those types of things are in the ground. The pumps are here, but not installed. There's some electrical work that has to happen in conjunction with that. That will happen when the weather warms up a little bit. But they made quite a lot of progress and they got a fair amount of pipe here. Done mostly force main, but some gravity sewer in the green spaces. So with that level of effort, they've kind of pulled back their forces here as it kind of gets muddy. They continue to do a little bit of work on the lift stations. This last week and this week, they're working on lift station one B. That's a small quad grinder down in Cedar Woodlands two. And that's moving along. They have removed some trees. They still have some force main to be installed between. Uh, they still have some force main to be installed, uh, between, um, lift station four. And Cedar Point Road, lift station four is a Cedar Cedar Woodlands lift station, uh, there's some. Uh, force main that goes down to the lift station or from the lift station up, the main part. Uh, but the contractor has completed a fair amount of money, uh, their pay request reflects that, uh. That being over three quarters of a million dollars and March and February is pretty darn, pretty darn good, so. Um, they're catching up a little bit, which I think we're all happy to hear, um, and then I would expect them to, uh. You know, they do have some people working, but it'll be slower till April one and then things will want to step back up. And then the the big summer push will start.
The trees all taken care of before the bad issue this year?
Uh, yeah, I think most of them are down, there might might have a few left, I'd have to ask Jeff for sure, but I know a good number of them are taking though.
Became aware of the bad issue.
Yeah. Yeah. And of course, we have a resident update that went out last week too, um. So any, any questions, oh, and we we do have a construction coordination meeting with Fitzgerald. Um, Thursday at ten o'clock, so if anybody wants to come, you're welcome to come, we had one with Staub last week. Um, we continue to do this.
I won't be able to make the meeting this Thursday, but.
I'll be at it.
I did have some concerns about the lack of, um, erosion control.
I noted that myself as on my drive out here.
There's nothing there and there's, uh. Yeah, it's just, any type of rain is gonna have a lot of dirt being drained.
I hundred percent agree, so we will talk about that, we'll get.
Even the whole road, even when it's flat going back to buy the storage or the holding tanks and stuff like that, it's just.
Yeah, I noticed there was a a couple culverts that still had some dirt and things like that that need to be addressed, so. Good, good point.
Um, action item, we have a, um, Minnesota Department of Health grant application for sealing wells. And Sunny, would you like to speak to that real briefly?
Um, as noted in my, uh, cover memo, we've, we've been working on, on, uh. Picking out sources to assist the different, um. Residents who are required to do the hookups, um, within a certain timeframe. How that kind of opens, but, um, this was, uh, an application that was. Um, actually prepared largely by Scott Hanson of M D H. Um, it's for ten thousand dollars and the wage, uh, three. Of the application with has an estimated start date of September first. Um, and again, this is just on the water side, so.
Right, and it is a grant, it's a grant application is what it is for ten thousand.
Right, and there's no matching required.
Nope.
Yeah, I mean, I make your motion to approve spending in this application.
Second.
Thank you for looking for these. Options.
More to come.
Good, good.
We've had some good luck working with, um, S W C D, uh, the Health Department, um, and, uh.
The H R.
The, oh, Homicide County H R A, all have been good partners for us and I think, uh, are really stepping up to help people.
Great.
Very, very positive in the conversations and. Find the money for it, so.
And Rural Water was here this morning for their, they do this once a year when they have that big of a meeting, um, they were nine to. Noon, um, and Skip stopped in specifically to introduce himself, so that was, that was nice, Scott was here as well.
Well, page three, you'll see a estimated start date of September first, if there's any. Wells or people that hook up the city water in the spring.
Is that dictated by the grant, can it be sooner? The start date.
Oh, he was concerned whether we wanted to put it out. It's, it's, uh, it's a, um, what's the word I'm looking for, it's, it's continuous funding, so. We go in for the application and if the funds are available, we'll likely get it, um, and then. The biggest thing is we can't spend it until all the documents are executed. Um, so there's that caveat, but, um, the good news is that the money comes upfront. We don't have any lag time between us expending the money to help and then having to wait for reverse spending, so.
So is homeowners come to the city or do they go to the county for this funding?
They will come.
They come here, okay, so it's different than hooking up the water. Sewers.
Right.
Provide by the county.
Right.
All right.
As I see, I'm actually, they're like thirty thousand dollars too, it's available, it's one to ten.
It's only ten.
Okay, I just thought that or.
One at a time, and once the ten has been expended, you can go back to the well and. No.
So you can get up to thirty thousand if you need it.
Did we vote?
No.
All the, they, all the favors, I'll be saying aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
And you're gonna pull ahead. Resolution.
We'll wait. Yep.
Before public works.
Yep, yeah.
All right, so, um. Spent a lot of time and effort. In our process, the meetings that we've had over the last three meetings on the. Twenty-fourth, January twenty-fourth, February twenty-fourth, February twenty-eighty. Um, so it's been a, it's a huge opportunity for the city and first of all, I'd like to thank Sunny for. Helping us with the scoring, the spreadsheets, um, that was very. Helpful and handy, um. The document, this is the, I treated this as a scoring and, um, guide for us to help us kind of. Through the process of scoring on the individual candidates as well as a kid with their summary that we just recently looked at, so. Um. Thank you for that, and if there's any applicants here, um, thank you. More applying and being interviewed and taking your time, so it's a. An exciting time for the city and, um. At the same time, it, uh, it took some time to go through this and hours on these parts, hours on individual. Council members that did the scoring and, um. So we're up to the point now where we did the enabling resolution, uh, when Christmas here on the twenty-fourth. We had a public hearing and, um, now we're integrating, so we're through the twenty-nine of, we have a resolution twenty twenty-three dash eleven. And this is a resolution naming the inaugural appointees to the Ornoco Economic Development Authority and E D A Board of Commissions. Um, the wherashes, I can read those real quick, but they're in the, um. In the body of the resolution. Just a couple ones, the last two, I think, says whereas the Oracle City Council. Has solicited applications from residents and our business owners within the city of Ornoco and received materials from the seven interested persons. We should make an update on that. Whereas the Oracle City Council subsequently reviewed the applications, interviewed seven candidates on February twenty-eighth and one were through. Individually scored and marked each candidate and reviewed cumulative results. So with that, I'll just go ahead and share with you my, um, appointees. That I would like to have approved by the council. Um, and as you see on the resolution, it also, the names that I have. Have the term ending with, there's a six, five, four, three, two. And the one, um, ending in December twenty twenty-three. So with that, um. I'd like to appoint Jamie Roth as a term ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-eight. Jeff Shupi ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven. Marcia Krieger ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. Adam, um, Beddling, Beddling, December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Dana and I are the two council members and our terms ending on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. And the last one is Jesse Moss, firm ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Go for discussion, I make a motion that we approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash eleven.
A second for discussion.
Um, I'm discussing on that, um, I agree with with some of those, um. Um, and and not all of them, uh, in particular, um. I'm looking at 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 Jamie and I would, uh, put in a much rather have Jan Bronson in there.
Instead of Jamie, who has started an E D A in the past?
Uh, well, I just, or or any of the other ones that might be in there, I'm just looking at at what there is, I think that he's a good businessman, that there is, it's been around the community. And there's a lot to offer and the time to be able to to do it, so. Uh, whether whether it be that or another one, but but, um, I'm just very much in favor of of Jan and what he can bring to the party for the city.
Yeah, I really like this group, um, if I was going to add anybody, it would be Skylar. Just because of his, um. His dedication to the community and his his true involvement and true caring heart for this community. Um, you know, Jan does not live here, he never has lived here. Jesse doesn't live here, but she has a business here, you know, Jeff doesn't live, everybody has a business here, I think if we're gonna pick someone who doesn't live here. Then it should be somebody who has a business, that would make the most sense to me and. And, um. Yeah, I do, I I like this list, I I, like I said, I I would, I guess, if I was going to take. If I was gonna put anybody, it would be Skylar, just because I know he's incredibly dedicated and he has experience.
Just for my clarification, Councilor Phillips, were you, were you talking about? Jamie Roth at the top of the list or Jesse Mays at the bottom of the list that you were. Transferring her.
Um, I would, I would, uh. Well, I, you know, I look at, uh, uh, what Jesse's got there and the involvement that's gonna be coming. In the community with with her.
So you've.
You are just.
Saying Jan. Janet Bronson in lieu of which one?
Uh, I'm just gonna do it in in lieu of Jamie.
Yeah, I would not support that, Jamie has literally started the E D A in a different community. She has more experience than anybody.
Yeah, she's your.
In a rural community in South Dakota, mind you. So that would be a a enormous loss, um, and again, she lives here. Jan doesn't.
I still think Jan has got a tremendous amount to bring to the, the table and the time that he has and the work that he's done, and he does have a good list here in town.
I would, it's his business, I'm not aware of a business.
It's the building that's sitting down, if you look at it, it's off of Minnesota Avenue.
Dead, I didn't know it was a business.
Yeah, he does a lot of business out of there, he sells stuff all the time.
Does he have a license, is there a business? Does he ever?
I didn't realize it was a business, I know he has a shop there.
Right. Don't you have to have a business license, an operative business?
We don't have.
We don't have it for anybody in town.
Okay, yeah, no, I I absolutely would not support that, I would actually support Ryland's. I think Ryland's, um, suggestions are great, I know Skylar would also jump on any committee. Because he's so incredibly, he's so incredibly.
Just a couple of things, I, I I like Jesse from the standpoint of demographics.
Okay, hold on, let me put you on speaker, okay, he's he's been, Jim's been trying to get into Zoom and it's not working.
No, it's not, so. There's people on, I don't know what's talking.
Oh, you're on speaker, okay, Jim.
So Jim, when did you join us in our conversation or?
I just joined now, I I called Jim's number, because it wasn't loading me in.
Okay, so let me just, for your benefit, let me read off the, I suggest my appointees, Jamie Roth. Excuse me, Jamie Roth were term ending in twenty twenty-eight. Jeff Shupi, Shupay, twenty twenty-seven. Marcia Krieger, twenty twenty-six. Adam Bedding, twenty twenty-five. Dana and myself are twenty twenty-four, these are all December thirty-first dates, end of the year. And the last one is Jesse Mays, twenty twenty-three.
Do you wanna share what you were just whispering, Carl?
Really, you're goodness, I've had it with you tonight.
Open meeting is, we are not cross-talking and whispering, so I just wanted to.
You should be able to do it all night, so let's simmer down, you know.
Okay.
I just wanted you to share what you were talking to.
Same thing you were sharing earlier, when Ryland and you got rather than tell me to quit talking to Jim.
Well, we were talking and or.
Yeah, well, whatever, whatever.
So do you have any questions, did you understand those, uh, Jim?
Richard.
Yes, I did.
Okay.
I did, yep.
Right, so, um, Jim had some comments, uh, if you wanna share those, so he can hear them.
Yeah, I just, I was trying to to say that I I thought that Jan would bring a lot to the, to the party that there is here with, with just. His enthusiasm and time that he can spend and and being a business owner that there is inside of. Ornoco, that I I was gonna try to say that I would would, um, uh, replace Jamie and 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 put in Jan.
And as I said, Jamie is literally the only bu- person that has started an E D A in a rural community. And and that substitution makes absolutely no sense. There must be something else behind that, and I'm kind of curious what that would be.
Okay, so I I would actually, I would actually say the same thing in terms of Jan, just because of his experience. And, you know, with the federal government and his experience, you know, in community, uh.
I'm curious, what, what, where, what do you think the federal government and immunity? I'm, I'm just curious, what, what do you think that'll bring to the E D A? We have, um, we have a federal judge.
You ask me a question, I'll answer it. So I I would say, because he's got a lot of experience, a lot of people experience. And and he brings a lot of law experience as well and understanding what you can and can't do. And and I think Jan's experience in the community, in Ornoco as well. Has has a lot to play in this, in my mind, for me.
Good, Jan doesn't live here, Dan doesn't have a business that is anybody, you know, that anybody knows about, there's no signage, there's no. It's a, it's a shed from my, from my understanding, um. We have a judge, a federal judge. On, so that really does cover that law piece, what we need. Is somebody with experience beginning in E D A, which is what Jamie has, um. Uh, she's incredibly brilliant in development and she works with. Local governments, she works with local businesses, she's lived in all sorts of different places, it would be. I think the most useful person we could possibly appoint. It would be, I think, the most useful person we could possibly appoint.
That's my main reason for appointing her as a six-year term.
Right. We would guarantee her, her and, um, it, it, yeah, that's a mind-boggling, that's a mind-boggling suggestion, considering she's the only person, I just wanna make sure the citizens are hearing this, she is the only person that has never been, that started in an economic development authority in the past. So I wanna make sure.
Hold, he's talked. Just, just a minute.
I, I wasn't finished.
Okay, let's let Jim talk for a minute, Jim, go ahead.
So I, I just wanna bring it up, Dana, when you say it's mind-boggling. I mean, to me, it's, it's somewhat of an insult, I mean, this, this is, this is my opinion, I respect your opinion, I respect everyone's opinion on the council. I gave you my opinion. Okay? I I don't think it's mind-boggling or disrespectful or anything, it's my opinion. And I do have a right to my opinion like everyone else on the council. I'm not saying anything bad about Jamie, I'm glad Jamie came forward. Right, I'm glad they all came forward, this is just my opinion on the candidate. It's, it's not a personal attack on, on the candidate or you or anybody else, this is my opinion.
I just don't think it's a responsible choice, given, given your elective position to choose the.
And Dana's trying to talk, Jim.
Oh, see, I can't hear them. Okay, go ahead, sorry.
Given to be an elected, you know, as an elected official, you're, you're, you're in charge of making an informed decision, not one out of, um, I don't wanna, I, I, it, it seems to be a little bit maybe out of friendship or out of, um, you know, there's something going on here because Jamie and Marcia by by far were the most qualified candidates. Subjectively, I I don't think anybody that sat in on those interviews, which we did have a council member not there. And so anybody that sat on, I mean, it, it's her expertise in that area, again, I just, again, I'm gonna state for the citizens, started in EDA. She didn't join one, she didn't, you know, so I I just, I wanna make sure that, um, the citizens understand the way you are voting, and I wanna make it loud and clear.
So, let me just comment about my decision. Can I talk?
I didn't know.
Oh, I'm, I didn't, go ahead, Carl.
That's why I said that.
I just wanna make it clear that Councilman Crowe was in Arizona. He came back, he came in and listened to the tape with Renee. I've read all the articles, so I ain't blindsided, so any allegations that are made against me and having some person come in to read some point about Carol Crowe being in Arizona. That's, that's from another councilman person, so.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Just for my clarification, Counselor Richards, are, are you suggesting that, for clarity, that Jan Bronson be in lieu of Jamie Rothie, or was there another candidate that he would replace?
Yeah, I I was, I was thinking in, in, you know, in replace of of Jamie. And and again, it, it's my opinion. And and again, it's, it's not against Jamie. Jamie has some EDA experience. Um, and and again, I I explained, I think Dan has, or Jan has, you know, experience with the city, and has experience with the federal government. You know, Jan has time to wanna be involved, and you know, this is just my opinion. And and I, I don't wanna be told that it's an uninformed, uninformed opinion, or it's a ridiculous opinion. I think nobody's opinion on this council should be labeled as ridiculous or uninformed or whatever, you know, Dana's stating, I think that's very unfair.
So the reason I chose Jesse, first of all, Jamie, I think, is, is, uh, you, you read her application and building a three-county economic development agency, whether it's in rural South Dakota or in Orinoco, I mean, that brings a tremendous amount of experience to our city. Regarding Jesse Mays, I was to, I was, I went back and forth between Jesse Mays and Jan. And a couple of things I liked about Jesse. I liked her enthusiasm, she's young, she brings a great demographics to our EDA. She has a investment of growth with her, uh, schoolhouse development. And I think that bodes well for her enthusiasm and willingness to bring some great ideas. I also thought about Jan, the one comment that he made reference to in his interview that really struck me extremely, kind of flabbergasted with it, was he said the downtown is not going to develop. So why would somebody with an attitude that expressed those, that nothing's gonna happen? And here we sit with applications for a restaurant downtown at our council meeting, there is growth here, so maybe that was a misunderstood statement, but to me, it was very clear that, the openness of ideas, I think, was, was, um, kinda diminished a little bit when I looked at Jan. And, um, so that was my reason for asking Jesse, it's a one-year, by the time he started, it could be about a six-month term, but you know, there was an opportunity for any of these candidates to come back to serve a second term. And I think that Jesse will bring a lot to the city, and she has already and will. And I just really think that she can bring a lot to our city. And Jeff, Marcia, Adam, they all bring a lot of talent. It'd be nice to make them all six terms right now, but we don't, we don't do that, we can't do that. But I just feel like Jesse compliments everybody else that's on the committee.
Okay, and and thank you for that, Riley. I I guess one thing that that I would say that that struck me is is being a little, there was a comment made that I I took as a little bit discriminatory, because I don't want, I don't want any member of the EDA to be discriminatory against any specific race or sex or age or anything. And the, you know, Jamie had made the comment about grants for females. And and I look at this as not, not, this shouldn't have a face of a female or male or a specific race or a specific age, anything. It, it's about people, it's about everybody fair, we, we have to be fair. And that, that's the only thing that that I looked at, um, that that struck me, uh, uh, you know, it was a little bit awestruck and, um, to hear that, because we should be fair, it doesn't matter who we are or, you know, uh, sex, race or anything. It's, it's about all of us. So that, that's the only thing that, uh, really kinda struck me a little bit wrong.
The reality is, there's a lot of great grants out there for women-owned businesses, minority-owned businesses that could benefit the community as a whole. That's just a reality, that's not a discriminatory thing, that's just the world we live in.
It isn't discriminatory.
They're out there for men, you know?
Yeah, they're all there for that, too. Let's, we gotta be real, we can't be discriminatory in any way.
When grants are available, we're, we're applying for one right now, I mean, I just think it's helpful to know that for a person that knows how to maneuver that, maneuver that ground really, really well would be beneficial.
I think that the, uh, and I, I don't quite follow your comments about the, the female reference that she made, I mean, we have businesses in our town already that are run by females, and that's great, there's a lot of home businesses that start up and move on to bigger and better things, so.
Yeah, Riley, and I'm not saying anything about the female businesses, I'm, I'm just saying to the reference of, you know, grants for female-owned businesses. I think it's great that we have female-owned businesses, I think it's great we have male-owned businesses. I'm just saying the reference, the reference can be looked at as discriminatory. I don't want us to be looked at as discriminatory if, if we're gonna look from an EDA perspective, if we're gonna look for grants. It, it shouldn't be just grants for women or, or grants for men or grants for minorities, it should be grants in general, we want all businesses, it doesn't matter who they are.
Mm-hmm.
We need to look at businesses and we need to be fair about it. Because I, I don't want us setting a precedence that that we're discriminatory towards anybody.
I don't think that's anybody's goal.
Well, go ahead.
I think you, I think that's a, you know, I think that's maybe a conversation you probably need to have a one-on-one with Jamie, because I think that you would, you wouldn't find that being. That you need to have one-on-one, this seems like, it probably is just a misunderstanding that you're, so I, I just wanna make sure.
No, I'm not misunderstood, I'm not misunderstood, I, I heard the comment, I'm, I'm bringing it up, we're just talking about this.
No, but I think it's something you should.
Wrong with Jamie, I'm not saying there's anything wrong with Jamie, I'm just saying, we need to be careful as a city, council, EDA, whatever it is, we can't discriminate against race, age, sex, anything.
Yep, and at the same time, I think if somebody was able to get a grant and they happened to be a woman, I think that we would be happy with that, right? And I think if somebody was to get a grant and they happened to be a young man, like a, you know, a tradesman, I think we would be happy with that. I think we'd be happy with anybody getting grants to help their businesses grow in, in our community, I think that would be a really good thing, I don't see how that could be bad in any way.
And I think that's what I'm saying, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we're all in agreement on that.
And it, it's a collective body, it's not.
One person.
Right.
Mm-hmm. Right. I just think that the person with the most experience that we have available to us would be the person that we need the most. So, yeah, again, like I second, I seconded your motion.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sorry, you called me.
I just say, I seconded, I seconded your motion, so.
So, to discuss. Motion.
Right, we're discussing, we have a vote.
That's what we're on right now.
You know, this is, this is the start of an EDA, and there will be other opportunities for other people to submit their name when these first set of terms end up as well. And we'll go through the, whoever's in charge of the the EDA, the board, and with the, Sonny is the executive administrator, there will be a process for filling these vacancies as they happen at the end of December and up through twenty twenty-eight, so, um, this is for the, for the people that don't, that were, the people that did interview, or even the person that did not, was not interviewed, uh, there's opportunities for people to come and to be considered for these terms as they fill up again going forward, so.
And one's a year.
It's not the last opportunity for anybody, it's just the starting point.
And one is only a year term.
I'm sorry?
There's one, you know, a year term.
Right, so.
And we need, we need people.
Next January, December, we'll be going through this process, or EDA will be going through the process and the council.
We need, um, committee members, well, we will have numerous, um, I would imagine committees that we need many different people on, um.
That's a good point, we talked about that when Chris was here, and, and, you know, the subcommittees, I mean, non-voting subcommittees, but they can be help with gathering information or, I would hope that's the case, so.
And then, that was a question that was asked during the interviews. If you weren't chosen, would you be open to serving on a committee? And I think to a person, all seven indicated yes, they would. Not an easy decision at all, I'm sure.
Just one question, Sonny, you know what, the score sheet, how close is that, that, what he's picking, you know, that, did we waste our time for me to sit here and listen to all that and read all them interviews and nothing comes off, but he picks who he wants?
No, no, you've got, you've got the cumulative.
No, we didn't. I don't, I don't have.
We don't have.
I don't have.
No, I didn't, any of them.
I didn't get one.
About on Sunday, Monday?
It was in one of the packets, with many numerous emails we got over.
I just got this one, that, that there was, that's a dash eleven. I didn't get anything else that there was, that was background on anything.
It was, it wasn't in your package, it was a separate email about three days ago.
I, I didn't get it.
Let me go get it right now.
Well, and nobody wasted their time, the rest of us were here in person. The rest, I just wanna remind you, the rest of us were here in person, doing the interview.
Maybe, haven't you been out of town in your life? I was in Arizona, is that okay?
Yes, but Carl, you've missed six meetings since December.
Missed six meetings, special meeting. Well, I didn't have to have my little puppet come in and come up and read a story up here about me.
What?
You heard me, you have Annie Johns come in and talk against me.
That is a citizen of this community, they're.
Okay, let's stop the conversation.
Okay, let's drop it, yeah, good idea.
Right, talking about the resolutions, so. You know, the cumulative summary was sent out.
Yeah, I know, we do, we did it.
Yes, I don't, I didn't bring all the email that came.
I didn't get nothing.
She sent it to all of us, it was, the last one was regard regarding, is a cumulative, and it talked about the, um, conflict of interest that you could have had, that some people had not explained.
I, I had, I had that, which, but I didn't have all, all the totals.
There was another tab, there was two tabs in that spreadsheet.
Yeah, I got the other tab that there was with that, but I didn't get the totals. So I don't know what everybody else did, so I got this one that I filled in, and I did this one that I filled in, so I did, I did.
That's the first one, the second.
The second one was this one.
Where was the third one? She sent out, uh, less than.
No, the rest of it is just all my worksheets that I, I did with, with that, so. But those are the only two that I had, and the only thing that came in the packet was this. Okay, and there wasn't anything that was leading in front of it or, or behind it. So that's why I, I didn't.
She sent it to all council members, she addressed it, mayor and council members.
And, and like I said, if, if I missed it, I missed it, but I'm just saying, I, I, I didn't get it, I was. Did you get it, Jim? Jim, are you there? Did you get that?
Actually, I'm, I'm looking to see if I got it here. Trying to log into my telecom. I, I don't remember getting an accumulative of everyone else's scores, I know I sent my scores.
She put it into the spreadsheet.
What day did that one come on?
I wanna say Friday or Saturday.
Oh, uh, uh, yeah, I, I didn't check mine, because I was out of town, I'm out of town, no. So then, where, where did we land?
Twenty, the March you sent it out.
I, I see it here, okay, I didn't figure it out before, but this.
I let her know, you wanna let her know you have it, I think she's trying to print it out.
I didn't hear that.
It came out on twenty March. The EDA scoring summary. And then there's an EDA.
So if you look at it, uh, um. Marcia Marcia, Kruger was with a thousand seventy-nine. Jeff was nine hundred and forty-five. Adam was eight hundred and seventy-two. Jamie was eight hundred and seventy. Jan was eight hundred and thirty-seven. Jesse was eight hundred and twenty-eight, and Skylar was seven hundred and seventy-five.
Jim?
Did you hear those, Jim?
Yeah, I did.
And so, so the bottom two that there were, were Jesse and Skylar on the total cumulative that were done.
And then as far as Riley, Riley, can you read yours again? Where, where you're putting them?
Yes, it was, um. Jamie was the twenty-twenty-eight, and then Jeff, the twenty-twenty-seven. Marcia, twenty-twenty-six. Adam, twenty-twenty-five. Dana and I were twenty-twenty-four, and Jesse was twenty-twenty-three.
Which is the end of this year.
Yes.
So.
So does everybody agree you did see it? Yeah. Alright, so it's, we've got everything in front of us, so.
I, I can't say I saw it, just because I, like I said, I, I'm traveling. But now that, that you read it, now I know.
Yeah, I just, otherwise I'm just repeating myself between Jan and Jesse, but I just feel like Jesse is a, is a better fit. Um, basically initially, for twenty-twenty-three, and, and we go to the next steps after that. And I think. Yeah, okay. Are there any other comments with that? Proposed pointies?
I don't have any.
Yeah, I think it's a, it's a great start for an EDA, and, uh, we'll see where it takes us and, and, uh, who's involved going on in the future, so. So with that, I'll call for the vote, roll call vote.
Did you make any changes while I was out of the room?
No, no, we were waiting for you to come back.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. So we had the motion by, uh, the mayor and a second by Bertner. Roll call is Mayor Ikors.
Aye.
Counselor Phillips.
Nay.
Counselor Bertner.
Aye.
Counselor Richards.
Nay.
Counselor Kraus.
Nay.
Okay, um, motion failed, resolution failed. So I would consider, um, putting Jan in for the December twenty-twenty-three in place of Jesse. I make a motion that we approve Resolution twenty-twenty-three dash eleven with Jan Bronson as the, filling the term of December twenty-twenty-three.
We have discussion on that?
I did a second.
For discussion?
Yeah, there's no discussion.
I made a motion for a second.
Okay. Point of order. Point, um, I would like to discuss the other people that are on there. Um, a little bit further instead of just, uh, the one that you had suggested for the change for Jan.
If you're suggesting other names, they would have to come from the mayor. If I read the standard correctly, statute, the mayor appoints for approval with the council, so. I'm not sure. What the options are there.
I'll second to Jan.
Okay.
With the change to Jan Bronson.
Any comments?
Um, the only, can I make a comment then on that, since it's open on that?
Yeah.
Is it only for those two, or could I make another observation on other ones that you have, that you have down there?
Well, it's.
Cause if I was looking.
Motion is for this Jan.
Well, it's, it's to be Jan too, but I was, was looking at, uh, possibly leaving Jesse in there and, and putting Jan instead of Adam.
Adam's a realtor. I think we want that real estate.
I think the motion between us, or the motion on the floor is with Jan.
Okay, then, then I'll go along with that motion.
What's that?
Okay, I, I agree. I'm gonna, I'm gonna agree with, with putting Jan in there.
Any other comments? Take a roll call vote for that motion.
Mayor Ikors.
Aye.
Counselor Phillips.
Aye.
Counselor Bertner.
Name.
Counselor Richards.
Aye.
Counselor Kraus.
Aye.
Okay, the, uh, resolution is approved. And, uh, we have an EDA board. And, uh, so will you contact everybody?
I will.
Or you'll meet you?
I'm.
Okay, great. Well, well, um. Got a lot of work ahead of us, and, um, hope it goes well, and I look forward to working with everybody too, so. All right, let's, um, continue on. Go back to Public Works. Yeah, Kane, please come to the podium, please.
You okay hanging, Jim? You okay on there, Jim?
Yes.
Okay, you're gonna say a bigger than.
Yep, I know my reception has been perfect, yeah. I'll ask questions if it's not.
Jesse, I'm gonna resign from councils as effective, I mean, he clears. I don't have to be humiliated by any other council person to have puppets come in and talk, or. And my resignation was made out long before you had that girl come up there and talk.
At least she's a woman, but thank you.
Right. Counselor Kraus, just as a matter of record, it has to be in writing.
It is. There's a one, there's a, a council member's got letter resignation in writing.
Okay. All right, um, I'm not sure what we. Page thirty-five. All right. Public Works. I guess really don't have anything to say. I don't know what we can say right now. We have to have a motion for acceptance of resignation.
I'll make a motion.
To see.
No, you don't. Okay, as long as, you know, he puts it in. What you, what you do need to do is, is a motion to declare the vacancy.
I'll make a motion that we declare a vacancy on the city council.
Second.
Any comments? All those, all those papers signifiably saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. O's. Jim, Richards?
Aye.
Thank you. That's approved. Thanks. All right, Kane, there he is. All right.
What do you name?
Fresh, a fresh air, Kane.
Well, I don't know about that, but, uh, in front of you tonight, I have a, uh, it's a request. And it doesn't need to be acted on tonight, but more kind of informational. Uh, month ago, our Bobcat broke down and needed to get repaired at the manufacturer's Sanco equipment. And while it was there, I threw out the idea of trading up for a new machine. Uh, a, a new Bobcat T sixty-six, um, it's on the state contract list. So, if you're not familiar with that, it's a discount from what the public would pay. Discount from MSRP, twenty to thirty percent kinda what you buy, trucks, skid steers, trailers. So, I just threw it out there. I said, hey, give me a trade-in value on what our machine's worth and a price to boot for a new machine. So, very informal, but I did get a quote, and the prices of machines have gone up drastically within the last two, three years. So, I was a little shocked to see the price of a new machine, but I was as well shocked to see the price of our machine. So what you see in front of you is a, a, a trade-in value of thirty-seven thousand for our machine. And a, um, a new machine, a T sixty-six, is seventy thousand. So, seventy minus thirty-seven, you're stuck with thirty-five and change. We are currently using our machines, so those hours will go up. But, uh, we're pretty confident that Bobcat's price will stay fairly steady. So, with that, I just want the council to know that this is a big ticket item. You know, we can't just go to Sam's Club, put this on the Sam's card, you know, it's a, it's a pretty big item. So, uh, I want the council to be prepared. So when I, if you do want me to come back with additional manufacturers, you know, this is Bobcat. We can get a Case, we can get a Caterpillar. We own Bobcat attachments right now. It makes sense to stay with Bobcat. They are local, Sturgill. Um, there's some benefits there. Some familiarity and, and, uh, you know, the, the relationships have already been made. So, uh, I would recommend Bobcat, but I can go to Caterpillar, I can go to Case and, uh, try to get something comparable. But I want the council to realize that when I do that, I mean, a lot of time involved with that. Not just mine, but theirs as well. And, uh, there is some availability issues with these machines. Bobcat, right now, they're saying if we pull the trigger tonight, we'd be looking at late August for a new machine. So, that's gonna change, the amount of hours on our machine's gonna change. Uh, the value of our machine could go up or down. We don't know, so. Kind of locking into a, a now number, a now estimate and trade-in value is kinda where I'm at, and I kinda need the council's approval to spend this amount of money. Cause it is a lot of money. So, I'm open for questions if you guys have any, um, I'll try to answer them the best I can.
Um, I was just wondering, uh, budget-wise, where are we at on, on this and what you're looking at that you've gotta prove?
So I'd be looking to, to use funds from the CIP. Uh, each year, the city puts money into the CIP fund. Uh, historically, it's about a hundred thousand dollars, goes into that fund every year. With that though, we budget for streets and roads, uh, chip ceiling, fire trucks potentially, larger, larger budget items, so. That's where I picture it coming from.
Would you look at that when you're looking at the fire department, and you're looking at a new tanker? Would you take the money out of this instead of looking at a new tanker?
Well, so, that's a good question, Jim. I'm, I'm both. I'm firefighter, nineteen years. Uh, I see the need there as a, as a firefighter. Uh, I also see the need of the city. Not saying one's better than the other. I'm saying there's a need for both, so.
And it sounds like the fire tanker is something that we're looking at future, a little bit in the future as far as.
Well.
Like, you're, they're gonna start a, a plan, like they're establishing a plan, a replacement plan.
Yeah, I won't speak for Dan. Uh, Dan is our chief, so, um. I think if we were wanting to get serious with a tanker, that would be a twenty-twenty-four purchase. This would be a twenty-twenty-three purchase.
Right.
So hopefully next year we budget.
Right.
Some more money to put in CIP.
Right.
Maybe more, maybe less.
Right.
We'll see how the taxes come and the budget process goes and.
From my understanding, they, you know, the, what you've implemented with the, the trade-ins and the, kind of the.
Rotation.
The rotation, thank you, that was the word. That's kind of what they're looking to do with fire eventually.
Yep, and so, and so what we're gonna try, what I'm trying to avoid with Public Works is having one piece of equipment that's twenty years old and the rest of the equipment that's fairly new, right? So, keeping current, keeping current with, uh, safety and, and, and quality and keeping up on maintenance and breakdowns. Our machine right now is going on five years old. It's a good machine. There's still good value to it. There is potential to, to sell outright. Uh, that takes time out of my day, and it, that could go on for, for months. People calling in the middle of the night, however that goes, that, that selling private party. Uh, this with Bobcat Sanco equipment, this is a, this is a realistic offer, an estimate, and.
So when they look at these machines, this thirty-seven thousand, that's a ballpark number, I guess, based on the hours today.
Yeah, like, yep.
What do they do? Do they, um, well, they're familiar with the machine, I guess, because they've been working on it.
Yep.
So they recognize it is in really good condition.
Yeah, there's a few things and, you know, nothing out of the ordinary.
Yeah, but it's five years old too.
Yep.
Well, I would, I would, um, I mean, there's none, there's no urgency here, I don't think.
I, I don't think so.
The long delivery time, but, you know.
I think, I think what I'm looking for from the council is to say, yes, Kane, let's, you can spend some CIP money this year on a new machine. You know, right here is a, I'm looking for thirty-five thousand and. You know, right here is a, I'm looking for thirty-five thousand and change, but. However, this works and however. The availability of these machines come, I, I think I need just a little bit of wiggle room or, or some breathing room. And I, I, I don't want to be down to. You know, I put more hours on our machine and it's worth less now, or maybe just the market fluctuates and, and. I just need a little bit of flexibility there is what I'm. I guess is what I'm kind of asking for. Does that make sense?
Yeah, no, I, I understand. And I, but at the same time, it is big ticket money. And I, uh. I think it'd be good to have comparable quotes, just. Give us, it, you know, may only be. Two to three thousand dollars difference, I guess, but that's what we'd like to see.
Right. And, and so, and so I, I can do that. I can definitely do that, but. You're not gonna get a Caterpillar machine and a Bobcat machine apples to apples. They're two separate machines. There's two separate horsepower's, two sep-, I mean, everything is different. They may be in the same class or the same category, but you're never gonna get the apples to apples.
Are the attachments in good shape?
Jim was gonna say something.
Yeah, go ahead, Jim.
I was just going to ask Kane. Have we gotten any bids from like, um, La Crescent? Or is it La Crescent or Dakota, Bobcat or, or some other ones too?
Yep, it, it's Cooley Region. It's Cooley Region down in Dresbach, uh. So, yep, so it's the same thing. They are a Bobcat dealer. They have the same prices as Sanco here in Rochester.
Uh, okay.
Trade-in value, they may be willing to go a little more or less on trade-in value. That's something that we could explore. But the price of a new machine is, is regulated by the state contract.
Yes, okay.
Attachment.
The thing that I, I think is, is a, one of the good points here is we can keep. If we do this right now, or whenever we do it, we can keep the attachments we have. Um, and they would work with a new machine.
That's what I was wondering, because if you look at, uh, getting, uh.
They're all.
Another bid, you have to get all the attachments too that go along with that.
There's some compatibility.
But they.
Yeah, most of them are.
Yeah, the Bobcat attachment is, it's an industry standard for across cat, deer, all of them. It's just a matter of having Bobcat attachments with a cat dealer or a cat unit or deer case or whatever, you know. So there's still the. There could be the finger pointing, but at the same time, that just kind of gives you a better package if it's the same, so I can appreciate that.
Do you have connections with, uh, deer that we can get a discount?
Well, it does. Got my pension check.
Well, and I don't, I don't know if they have, they're also on the contract, state contracting list.
John here.
Yeah.
Uh, so as far as I know, it's a Bobcat. Caterpillar, Case. Whacker Newsen and New Holland. So each year it changes, but like I say, uh, what, what draws me to, to Sanco is they are local. Uh, we do have that, that relationship with them. They do know our machine. I think it's a fair trade-in value. Uh, but like I say, this is, this is more, more to come with this. Uh, but like I said, that CIP spending needs to get, the council needs to approve that. So. If this is the year to purchase a new, a new skid steer, great. Give me a budget number and, and I'll, I'll hit the ground running with, with multiple bids. I'll try to get that, that apple to apple, uh, bids in front of you.
Did we have any other projects that we were looking to use CIP funding or money for?
One of them was a gazebo.
Yep, we were gonna, yep, gazebo in Riverwood Hills. That was a, an item that.
The two.
That got missed last year and, uh. We did want to purchase another pickup truck this year, which. The availability of pickup trucks right now is pushed out till twenty twenty-four. I'm on a list for twenty twenty-four. Hopefully that come, that's a reality in twenty-four, so.
Kane, let me ask, is there anything that we have slated as a project in, that you know of right now? Over the next year? That we would normally have to pay for that week? And if, if we had this machine? That we could use this machine to do it and not have to pay for it, just out of curiosity?
I, I think it's gonna have, uh, some more versatility than our current machine. Uh. You know, I can see us doing more street work, more shouldering work. Uh, this machine will be more capable and.
More digging.
More digging, more, uh, you know, this, this machine will be able to handle larger attachments. You know, we can rent attachments and, and, uh, you know, we've got a lot of woodland, a lot of woods that we can, uh. Right away is, I just think this is a, a more versatile machine that we can get more use out of. But nothing really sticks out, Jim, as far as like a, a, a specific project.
Do you have any trail work planned?
So there's always trail work and, and the addition of trails and, and just maintaining of trails. Uh, and something like this would better suit our needs.
I was even looking at the water and sewer, cause once you've got that facility that's out there, we're gonna have to maintain that as well. Whether it be snow removal or whatever that needs to be done out there too, so.
Yep. And, and, and another item to throw into this is, you know. Right now, we don't have a trailer that would haul this machine, but that would be something that we could make a. A year-end purchase with budget, with budgeted money from this year, if that's a possibility. Or we'll have to budget for the following year.
So the two carrier today is, is a two passenger, of course with the skid steer. Nobody can ride on it, so it's just one person, yeah. What's your feelings about that, going from two to one and is that a big deal or not?
I would prefer that only one person be in the machine at a time. Uh. That's me coming from a road construction background. I've never been able to sit shotgun with somebody in a machine. Uh. But that's just me. I, and I don't think that's a hiccup. I don't think that's a.
Right. The, the two carriers have a utility purpose.
Absolutely.
More of a construction type.
Absolutely.
So.
The, the machine we have right now is excellent. Yeah, you can haul a person in it. You can haul things in the back, things in the front, multiple attachments. It's worked great. We're finally to the point where we're outgrowing it and we're using it beyond its capability. And we can see when there's issues with it, when we're overworking it and, and, you know, I feel.
Are there, are there safety issues with the other one? Uh, you're saying we're working it beyond its capability? Are there things that we're doing from a safety perspective with that thing that we probably are, are kind of hitting the fringe that we're. Where the skid loader would be. A more safe way to go? But, but I'm, I'm thinking for instance, like a fork, using it for forklift or lifting things. I don't know how stable the, the, um.
Yeah, absolutely.
The Bob, the other Bobcat is that we have.
Yeah, so our current machine only lifts probably six feet. So, uh, this new track machine would lift, uh, ten, twelve feet, you know, it, it, it's definitely, uh. More versatile, can do more, lift more, more horsepower. Uh, like I said, we're, we're getting to the point where we're just outgrowing our machine and it. It doesn't do the things we want it to do, so it kind of, it hinders us in so many ways.
Well, I just, I've just done some comparative specs with the, the Bobcat and the cat. The deer is not on the list, so that's not an option, but. For the size of the machine, it's, it's got both of them seventy-five horsepower. Um, the Bobcat has two hundred and thirty pounds more lift capacity. And. The cat that are comparable, you know, the seventy-four horsepower is almost eleven hundred pounds heavier. Uh, so you can lift more, but we're not, we're not building construction, we're.
No, we're not.
So.
And, and so to me, you guys, it, it doesn't matter if I'm in a Bobcat or a Caterpillar or a Case. I, as long as it's, as long as it's a skid platform, skid steer platform, a track machine, I'll be happy. And, and I don't know if it matters to you guys what color it is, you know, uh. So I, I, I want to make that clear is. You know, will you, what will you guys be looking at ultimately? Will you be asking me, Kane, what is your preference? Or will you be saying, Kane, this is the low bid. This is what we want you to buy. That's, I guess that's what I want to get prepared for.
I, I think we should have it per cap because it's yellow and gold red, so that'll, that'll match a little bit better for gold red.
Absolutely.
One question I would have, Kane, about this is, so what, what's, what horsepower are you asking for?
Uh, seventy-five horsepower range.
Okay, so my question is, could you get by with a sixty-five? And then the other question with that is, is there that big of a price difference? Between like a sixty, sixty-five versus that seventy-five? I know seventy-five is a big unit.
Sure, it's, and, and it's seventy-five is not the largest and it's not the smallest. It's, it's more of the, uh. Most sought after. Uh, you know, the small ones have their place in the industry and so do the large ones.
Are you looking at track or are you looking at rubber tire?
Track.
Okay.
And just like the, the Bobcats you're selling for eight hundred and sixty-six hours, eight hundred and eighty-six hours. This will be a low hour machine.
Absolutely.
So the trade-in value will hold its trade-in value with the Bobcat, I think, too.
The, the trade-in value with all of them will be very high. I mean, these will be low hour machines. Uh, the majority of the hours we put on the machine will be for snow removal. Uh, you know, the more construction work you do and the more land clearing kind of work you do. That will degrade the machine faster than snow removal.
How often do you replace tracks on those?
Well, I don't plan on replacing tracks.
I think they run pretty good.
Yep, I, I think we'll, we'll be, uh. I think we're only gonna put on up to five hundred hours a year. That'd be a, that'd be a lot of snow plowing.
Does Bobcat or, offer a lease program?
They do, and I looked into that and per year you're looking at about ten to eleven thousand dollars per year. And then you, then of course you have to purchase it at the end of the lease or you have to give it back.
And I'm assuming that you, you purchase hours in that lease too, correct?
Right, there is a cap on, on hours, yep. And then within that lease too, you know, it, it has to be, there's some, there's some requirements. It has to be serviced by. A Bobcat technician. It has to be warranted by a Bobcat technician, you know, certain things there. Uh, yeah.
I like the idea of, of, um, giving this some more thought, you know. In the past, you've. Maintained your reputation with scat boars.
Yes.
And the dealership and the same thing, I think, could apply with the Bobcat. You've got that relationship with Bobcat and we're not mixing and matching and. Working with different dealers.
Absolutely.
So I think there's a lot of value in that too, so.
Just like our, just like our pickup trucks. Right now we've got Chevy trucks, we've got Boss plows, we've got, we've got a lot of compatibility.
Right.
And, and that means a lot from us when you can interchange things, interchange, uh, attachments. And, and furthermore, you know, they're, they're, right now, we, we find ourselves in the need of a second Bobcat, right? We, we had that need already, so, uh, we want to go do some work. We want to load up some material and haul it across town and. Oh, you need a ma- machine here to load it and you need a machine there to move it once it's unloaded. So we find ourselves in that predicament always where it's, okay. Do as much as you can here, stockpile here and then drive the machine. I mean, it's. And then you, you need it, it's, so in the future.
Kind of gross, I think.
In the future, I can see having a, a skid steer, a track machine at the wastewater treatment facility. That's future.
Okay, but, but the trailer that you have, are you, is, uh, pickup gonna be able to pull it okay on what you've got now or?
Current trailer will not, will not hold this machine.
No, but I'm just saying you get the new trailer, will your pickup be able to handle?
Picking ups, abso- absolutely, yep.
I make a motion that we approve. Uh, I make a motion, we approve the purchase of a Bobcat. T sixty-six, T four Bobcat compact track motor. Up to thirty-six thousand dollars. If you funded from the CIP.
Well, I mean, I'll second that, but I mean, are we gonna be okay with what this is on the, on the quote with the extra hours this summer? That's what I'm looking at, or is that gonna go over the thirty-six thousand?
And, and are we putting a, are we putting a time limit on it, Ryland? That it would be purchased by a specific time or how do we wanna?
I assume it'd be purchased ASAP to get a, get delivery date.
Yeah, and so that's the thing is. You know, the hours are gonna change on our machine. And if we're not gonna receive the new machine until late August or, or later. You know, how, I, I need to work out some details with Sanco equipment on actually what's gonna take place.
So you'd rather come back with a more firm.
I, I, I would like to have Sanco have a, a firm. Cause like I say, there's some unknowns here. What's gonna happen this summer with hours and?
If you're looking at this fall and, and we don't have a trailer to be able to do it. You know, we're gonna have to go in to probably buy the trailer too as soon as we can, cause if it's looking at August or September. You're gonna have to move this thing around town.
Right, so you're looking for a motion then to, to come back in April?
Let me come back in April, but don't be shocked when you see this, this potentially.
Okay, so I withdraw my motion. If you withdraw your second.
I'll withdraw my second.
And I think too, just things moving along, I guess I would make sure you look at these options. Cause there's, um. Thirteen thousand dollars worth of options there too, so.
Right, and that's.
Air ride suspension seat and the lights and, I'm not saying you don't need that, I just want. Be prudent, prudent about looking at the options.
Right. Absolutely.
The other thing, Kane, that I, I would suggest, see if they would do, cause they, you, you have a track record. On, on average number of hours per season, right? Because they're, they're doing the maintenance already. And if you can tell them, okay, so we'll go into this and, and we'll trade in and we'll buy a new unit. But you have to take it at, we're making the deal on the hours that's on it now. And understanding, cause you're not gonna get your, my, our unit in. Until a certain time, you're gonna, you're gonna make the deal on the hours that they are now.
Right, and, and I think that, that's a detail that needs to get, uh, ironed out, definitely.
Yep.
And so I, I can come back at the April meeting with these details. And I, like I said, this was, I didn't want to hit you with shock tonight with this big ticket night item. I want you to be ready for April.
Uh, next item is a plate compactor.
Yep, I have, uh, right now we're filling potholes like mad. Plate compactor would, would help out tremendously. Uh.
And you got those extra bids too, right?
Yep, I, I.
Those.
I do have some extra bids in there. Right now, Feral Supply Company in town, they've got, uh, show pricing. Uh, five hundred dollars off, so that's why you see the, the amount for seventeen ninety-nine, ninety-nine. Uh, there is money in the streets and roads budget.
I make a motion, we approve the purchase of a. Um, Feral Supply Plate Compactor for seventeen hundred ninety-nine dollars, ninety-nine cents.
Wait a second.
Any other comments? All favors, signify by saying aye.
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 Thanks, Council.
You're welcome. Stay on, we're talking streets and roads real quick. Oh. Fire department, fire relief, first responders. FYIs, don't think there's any action required there on anything.
You guys have something?
Somebody has some questions or comments?
Or wait.
I didn't have anything, circle. We saw your. I didn't have anything, circle, we saw your. Dan put together, um, some bills that you're working on, FYI for us.
Good request, I think, from our last meeting. Our last meeting, did we request, what did we?
I don't think you have anything else, I, I mean, I, everything looks like it was fitting together.
You wanna update us on the township?
So I had circled the township with the. Uh, first responders, we had a meeting March fifth or fourteenth, and we'll discuss reimbursements from township. What was township's reaction to that?
Did I know that Dan talked about that they were giving them, they were eight thousand dollars is all we were getting, and they said that they would increase. That amount, but they didn't say what it was gonna increase to, if I remember right.
At the, I was at the township meeting, yeah, and that's why I noted that, um, Lucy and I.
No more to come from that. Alright.
Um, just a quick township. Now, that, we just brought it up, I would like to. Invite them to a meeting. Kind of like we did with the fire department, just to get to know each other almost, if we could do something like that. I would like to suggest that. There's, I mean, we're all. Yeah, I would like to suggest we kind of start. Once a year, getting together.
You know, cause I mean, we're not conflicting, there used to be Gold Rush, we're conflicting all the time.
With this Jim, I mean, like, this would be like a, like a separate one, almost, kinda like we did with the fire. Exactly, just kind of a meet and greet.
One thing I wanted to bring up about township meeting. Um, yeah, they're only, they've only been giving us eight thousand dollars a year for at least the past five. Our, our calls have increased, we're doing two-thirds of the calls in the township, getting quarter of them done, right? City is basically subsidizing our runs in the township. Right now, we're making seventy dollars, as of last year's numbers, we're making seventy dollars. A run, okay, if you take, if you take how much money we have in our budget, and then. Well, basically it's costing us seventy dollars to do a run, okay, in the township, and that is based off of their eight thousand dollars that they're giving us. We did a hundred and fourteen runs, eight thousand divided by one fourteen gives you seventy and change. Um, we put two or three, four people on the rig, that's at least forty dollars. Right, just because we're paying our people ten dollars to come to a call, right? Doesn't include the diesel, it doesn't include any of the equipment that we use. If we use a set of AED pads, it's two hundred bucks. Right, it doesn't include any maintenance on our vehicle, our ambulance is a two thousand one, couple of years from now, it should not be in service. And we shouldn't be putting money into it right now because it's at its end of life. It also can't, it shouldn't go out when we have bad roads because it doesn't have four-wheel drive. We do take the pickup and that kind of supplements it, but again, city is supplementing the calls in the township.
Yeah, and, and I agree with everything you're saying on that, and, and you know, especially, you know, with the number of calls that you're doing in the township. I mean, it's, I, I agree that they should be paying a whole lot more than there is.
They should be, and I know at the meeting we talked about, or they talked about. Up to, to this point, Dan and other, and other directors of the first responders have. Been our go-between from the city to talk with the township to get our funding. Okay, it was talked about in the meeting last, one of the last meeting, that Sunny would be our representative, or the representative of the city. As a first responder, as an officer, as a firefighter, I really feel that Dan. Our, our officers need to have, need to be in on that conversation. Numbers will tell us some things, types of calls will tell us some things, but experience is going to also tell you things. So, I understand we can't go into, we can't go in, you know, get into, uh. Like a legal agreement as an officer of the fire department. The city has to do that, but we need to make sure that we're, we're at the table so we can bring our experience.
No, and, and we agree with that, I mean, I was looking at the calls that, that you had, um, just in February, which isn't right, cause I mean, normally. There's a whole lot more, but it says five for the city and six for the township. Normally it's a lot higher than what that is for the township, so.
And then March rolled around and we had like four in twenty-four hours, so.
No, I mean, that, that's what I'm saying, I agree with what you're coming, it just didn't show with the numbers that, that showed up for what was going on in February, so.
So, and if you want to see, I've got numbers that go to, well, this, I've got this year's up-to-date, I've got twenty twenty, you know, twenty-one, and I think, I mean, it might even have twenty. Tells you what the calls were, where they were, and the type, but Dana wanted to know about how many fall calls we had, or. Maybe, you know, what drug-related calls we had, I could show you that information, we have that.
No, I, I think it's good, I, I, I think we need to have more money, no question about it, from township, and I think for them to be a part of it would be. The right way to do it too, so.
Well, and just to be clear, I mean, it. Uh, my comment was that, that Dan doesn't have, or any of the other committee. Or department heads have the, have the authority to bind the city. It's, it's certainly not trying to exclude you guys. Cause I agree, you should be at the table, and we should be, one of the things that we wanna work at is. Like their fire department is from Pine Island for the township. You know, and they have an escalating kind of agreement, and we wanna make sure that, you know, that we're not just. Agreeing to something for, that's gonna stay flat for the next five years either, so, so we do wanna do that, but. And I wouldn't be, um, binding the city either without council approval, so. So I, just so if there's this perception that all, I'm the end all do all, that's. Yeah, I just wanna clarify, that's not the case, but, but it, it should be in tandem.
Yeah, and I think it'd be helpful if I actually showed up next time to the meeting that I was supposed to go to.
Uh, yeah, any other questions about first responders or fire?
Thanks, you guys.
We appreciate you. Anya, you have anything to say?
I'm taking it all in tonight.
Okay, um, I was thinking, were we missing the P and Z? Anything you guys need me for?
Good night, thanks.
Uh, yeah, streets and roads first.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was just.
So, streets and roads, there's, uh.
So just left, was he good? The, the only thing on streets and roads was that I, I had really hoped that. Like other issues, go to committee first before they come.
Okay.
To the full council, and so, um, even that speed limit thing, I was hoping that we would, um. Yeah, and, um, and I know Kane mentioned today that I was the only one that had responded. I would not name a names, Mayor or Counselor Richards, but.
Good point, but, um, we'll set up a meeting. And come back to the April meeting, I guess.
Yeah, let's get something before you do.
I just wanna say, having driven in a town, a couple towns north of us, to work every day, I appreciate our streets.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Appreciate mine.
I appreciate our streets.
In terms of.
In terms of other small towns.
Plug it in.
In comparison.
We do have some pretty good streets, there are some areas that are gonna get, uh, reclaimed and.
Are you, you want me to call you if we need you?
Well, yeah, and I'm not talking about the project, I'm talking about like the potholes in general, and just, you know, I think you guys do a good job.
I'm gonna call you then?
You can.
Okay.
Alright, we'll come back, let's. Get together, maybe, or the next ten days, week.
Then Ryland, that committee is yourself and Jim Richards, okay? And Sunny and Phillips, Jim Phillips?
No.
Oh, okay.
I was out this year.
Oh, us, okay, thank you.
Okay. Alright, planning and zoning.
I was looking for that, yeah.
Yeah, here, a resolution of a vacant, or a vacancy, oh, yeah, vacancy and time change. You know, here's a recommended, for Paul Pendergrass. Resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh eight. Uh, to recognize a meeting time change from seven o'clock to six thirty on the second Thursday. And be resolved and points Paul Pendergrass to the vacant seat for a term to expire in December twenty twenty-five.
I make a motion that we approve resolution.
Sorry, I can't take your call right now, but.
Twenty twenty-three dash oh eight. Uh, for both, uh, Paul Pendergrass and also for the change of time. To our planning and zoning to six thirty PM instead of seven.
You're just adopting the res. Yeah, so your motion is to adopt.
The resolution.
I'll second that.
I'd like, I'd like to just make a comment on the appointment, and. I appreciate Krista coming out today, and I think, you know, that speaks a lot, and I think, um. Her. You know, while I respect the. Committee's. Um, recommendation. I can't help be a little concerned with the very, very close ties that some of the committee members have with each other. Um, so I would, I wouldn't be able to support Paul's appointed. Appointment to that committee at this time, maybe if it was a different committee, but not with the makeup it is at this current time. I think Krista's background in government and board. And her board, um, member leadership and is incredibly. Um, would be beneficial, and it'd be new, so it, it'd be nice to have somebody that's lived in the community a lot, that's got that kind of experience and. Brings a new set of eyes. And we are always, we, you know, we've said so many times, we're trying to get new people in, and then. And then, uh, we seem to not let them in, so it's interesting. Anyway, that's my two cents.
So was there, in the planning and zoning minutes, I, I didn't, was there anything in the P and Z minutes about his recommendation, or what they?
Yeah, we recommended.
Bring to the committee?
Yeah, we recommended Paul and, and, um, it was, um, a four to two vote. Uh, with Paul for, we really liked what he has for, since he's been on the Planning and Zoning Commission before. That, that he understands a lot of what's going on, he lives downtown. Uh, been, been here for a lot of years of what goes on. Uh, so, and he's also just recently retired, where he's got the extra time that there is to be able to work with things. And so that's why we overwhelmingly, um, thought that, that, that that was the right person to put in for, for the P and Z.
So was there a, a vote for, so the other person did not receive a, she wasn't mentioned in the, in the ballot?
She was there, and so it was four to two for the vote. There were six of us that were there that voted.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so it was a four to two vote.
Okay, I see.
Blind, or, um, what's it called? Ballot, blind ballot, secret ballot, yeah.
Secret ballot, so.
And just, again, you know, the whole retired thing is, it's getting a little bit. Old. I'm, I'm really, I'm really, uh, I'm really a, almost offended by it. Because I feel like as a, as a full-time employee and a mom and a volunteer and a tireless. Um, advocate for this community, um, all I hear is about. The only people who have time are retired people, and that's just not true. I just, I don't wanna dissuade others. Who might be thinking about doing this work from doing it, because. It's possible, and it's, and it's good, it's good to have. People from all walks of life and all ages, so I just wanna put that out there, we, I keep, it's come up numerous times tonight, and I'm. I'm a little tired of it.
Was Jim gonna call back in, or?
I, I'm trying to get ahold of him right now, so. His battery was dying on himself.
Well, you have a motion and a second.
And a second, but, but I made the motion, but now you'd have a second.
Yeah, I made six.
Yeah, he made seconds, so you can call for the vote, if you want.
Can't take your call right now?
Look, let's do the roll call, hold.
Mayor, of course.
Aye.
Councilor Bergner.
Nay.
Councilor Richards is absent. Councilor Phillips.
Yeah, aye.
Well, we have a quorum with three, and we have an approval with two, I guess. That's approved. Works and trails.
We didn't meet.
What's that?
We did not meet.
Oh, yeah, I, yeah, you know, why we, I never heard. It does make a difference.
Conflict, and.
I just got the note from Kathy, or from, uh, Amy. We'll be in April. So the next item, uh, it's nothing, you can see a spreadsheet of our Zumbro River Regional Water Trail. We're working with about fourteen thousand five hundred dollars here. But SEH has been working very aggressively on next item resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh nine. Which is approving a LCCMR. Grant application for, um, hundred and seventy thousand dollars. The note, it's not a magic grant, but, so what it is, it's, it's two hundred thousand, I'm sorry, what the re- residents, up to two hundred thousand, up to. So the legislative, SEH has, um, lobbying grant. Experts that work for SEH, it's a big, large engineering company in the state of Minnesota, and maybe other places too, but. All they do is just work with grants and getting funding for projects that they work on, and this kinda. Came to my awareness in early March. When we were trying to get back into our Zumbro River Water Trail Regional Planning that. Our funding is, we're still waiting for funding in twenty twenty-four. But at the same time, SEH said, why don't we just go out and try and find some other funding? Which is very legit funding, it's respected by the Greater Minnesota Parks and Trails Commission, cause we're still working on that. To get our regional plan, master plan done. But we know we're running short of funds, or will here. So, they brought to, uh, to my attention, people, other people at SEH that I work with, uh. We have a very good possibility of getting a two hundred thousand dollar grant, uh, through the LCCMR. So the last, uh, so this resolution kinda supports that, but it also makes Sunny the, um. Our, uh, project manager, is the right term, I think. The application is, so I put together a letter, um, a cover letter. No, this is, it'll have your name on it, Sunny, that's right. On this one here, I think your name will be on it. When it goes in with the application, the application is due March thirty-first. When it goes in with the application. The application is due March thirty-first and. The history says if you can get it in on earlier, like March twenty-eighth, in case the system going down, that makes sure that we get our application in there. So if you had a chance to look at this, um, a lot of the wording comes from, and it's, there's a version seven that's coming out. Some of those verbiage will be changed because it's a, it's a toggle down. Simple region, not this verbiage that you see on this first page. A lot of it comes from the application that we sent in back in twenty. Twenty-one to get the high ranking. But what it does provide is thirty thousand dollars go towards um. Having, working with SEH and this funding is to be approved, if we get approval, it'll be in September this year. But the funding comes July of twenty twenty-four. So you'll see completion dates of June and July and August of twenty twenty-four. So there's thirty thousand dollars for this activity, one of program management. We're also going to start looking at. Seven milestones. On page four at the top there, we documented all the resolutions. That we got back in twenty nineteen from all the cities and the counties. Ultimately, and we're still working on the Greater Minnesota Regional Parks Trails Commission Master Plan. That's, we're still moving forward on that, probably submitting a plan hopefully at this late spring or early summer. Just to get into the commission's website and have their evaluator start looking at it so they start giving us feedback. Further back, there's a budget summary identifying where this funding is going to be used for, but ultimately. What will come out of this is a joint powers board. Made up of city and county representatives that will ultimately be in, in charge of. The funding that comes out of future funding, whether it comes from the commission or more from the LCCMR. But the application needed a um. A local like Ornoco and up to this point it's been myself. For the regional plan, but for the LCCMR, they needed a fiscal agent that we identified, Sunny, that didn't be that versus the mayor, so. And that's a good move.
I had a quick question on this. I'm looking at the first page and, and that where it says she used twenty-four thousand and we still have fourteen thousand.
Oh, on the spreadsheet, right?
Yeah. Um, when did this start? On, on this, I see it as much, you know, twenty-three, but.
We started twenty nineteen.
I think it's a, it's a great thing that's going on. I just had no idea that we were doing it, that's why, you know, I think it's wonderful.
There is a map here that. It's not in here, but it's in the application. It'll be completed and next week when it goes in, so I will make sure we get a completed. Plan for everybody's awareness too and has more information graphic design.
That made a lot of sense, I think, getting all the communities involved, I think is great too. I didn't realize that it was navigable all the way through. For that many miles.
Yeah, the whole watershed.
When it's, when it's, when it's water levels good, yeah.
Or we, we by preliminary identified. The commission wants to have six regional, six strategic locations. That the commission would prefer to have to really, but that's where we put the money into improving the amenities. Ornoco is one of those, Rochester has a couple, the Zepa, Madderville. And.
Lake Sembro.
Several falls, I think.
That's, again, it's going to tie in so nicely to our, you know, our economic development and.
No, I, I think it's great. That's why I was saying when I was looking through it, I didn't have any idea that we were doing that. It's like, okay, that's making, I beg it.
All right, um. With that, I make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh nine.
Okay.
Any other comments or?
Good job. Thank you for all your work on that as well.
Roll call vote.
Roll call, yeah, that's what I say. Roll call vote.
Mayor Angors.
Aye.
Councilor Bergner.
Aye.
Councilor Richards is absent. Councilor Phillips.
Aye.
Councilor Kirkwell.
Thank you.
That's approved, thank you. Parks and Trails, just an update, Minda Lake Shady Peninsula.
Well, that was crazy stuff with all these emails.
The bottom line is, and I did get a hold of Mike Dory this afternoon, finally. He's the Director of Communications and Implementation for Minda for this region here. So there's, and I was going, so my conversation with Mike and what I've sent to the RIDE supervisor and. Mike himself, but nobody responded, but today finally I got a, some attention. So I'm going to send him this email string, basically it's saying that there was an agreement made back in twenty sixteen. That the Minda would agree to build the fence. Along Highway fifty-two in lieu of us paying for the peninsula. So my hope is that they will honor that agreement. Who the Minda people made, so um, on the first page. Let me just see if I can find it real quick here.
But halfway down where it tends to support your argument. That Minda.
Trains, the fencing recompensation for the parcels that would help avoid another hit on the project budget we cannot afford. So that's, I want to make sure the plan is to, I was going to send this information to him. And he's going to discuss it with the appropriate people because everybody that's on these emails is retired. Everybody. Because I read it off, only I know Tom Street and Stephen Kersey passed away in twenty twenty. I'm hoping they will honor that agreement so we can. Kickstart our development of Lake Shady bed, so.
Yeah, it would be.
Be great. Personnel.
Give us some good news, Sunny.
Okay. Now, people are trying to join.
Done your organizational chart, really?
Oh, yeah, the organizational chart is, um, I guess like, I don't know that you've ever had one. Um, I know that there was one kind of developed. Only for um. My predecessor in terms of how it, it kind of. Um, interacted with. Public works primarily, but I wanted to show a larger build out for. The entire city because this, this, I understand that a city administrator is new concept. Um, and it is different for people and um. But I don't want it to be a scary thing for people either, and it's not intended to um. To dampen any department from doing its thing, um, but it is intended. At this juncture, to, to lay that foundation on how things should be in an, you know, a smoothly operating city. So that, so that we're not getting ourselves. Um, getting the city committed to things that, by people who don't have the authority to do that and, and. Um, certainly, my approach is, is to keep council entirely informed. Um, so it starts with the residents doing the elections to elect a mayor and or council people. And then the five of you, then appoint a city administrator, whether that's me or down the road, it, it'll be something. Um, but it, it should be applicable across the board. This is just good business practice. Um, and at this point, uh, as city administrator, I also serve as the Human Resources. Director, so all of those dotted lines are, any individual employee. Can um come directly to me with whatever issues they might have. But there is a, a chain of command in departments and um. And I know the first responders and I know the fire department has that as well, built within its structure, so. It's just stepping up and I know we've talked before about. Is, you know, coming into the city and seeing all of the, the committees. Operating in silos basically and not really interacting and I want to give credit again to. Councilor Bergner for really bringing um first responders, fire department and staff. Um, together so that we can, you know, get on the same page and, and. Connect more than anything else and I think um. That's where you headed to with even, you know, connecting with the, the EDA and um. The township board, you know, kind of as we um grow there. And, and start fielding more and more potential for annexations from the township. We want that all to flow smoothly, so. Just uh, just so you have that.
The only thing I was going to say on that, and, and this is a great chart. Is that with the personnel too, would there be a dotted line that could be. Somewhere connected to the Personnel Committee uh to go over and pick up the. Public Works also, or just leave it the way it is that way? Is that that? No.
No, it should be, it should be staff come to the city administrator. There, the policy will allow for um. In certain situations to circumvent the city administrator, but not as a first line of.
No, I didn't say it first. I said per dotted line that there would be. So that, that's all, I was just looking at the chart, but I mean, I'll, I'll leave it the way it is, that's, I have no problems with that.
So, and I, I just, and this is just something. New from the standpoint of being on paper, but the Personnel Committee, now this is, I'm talking in the past. The Personnel Committee was really. Worked with the city for treasure, but it was for everybody in public works as well as. Deputy clerks and all of the standing committees. The standing committees really didn't come through Personnel, I mean. The Personnel Committee was really over this area over in here with public works as opposed to the standing committees. The Personnel Committee really had, in the past has not done anything with the P and Z or Parks and Trails.
No, it is a, it is a standing committee. I think that's why it's over there.
Okay, you're right, but you're right, from that standpoint, they're not connected.
Right.
There's no connection here.
I think with the new, when we made the decision to hire Sunny as the city administrator, we also made the decision. For her to be in charge of personnel and only. Utilize the Personnel Committee if there are.
Right, that's what I, and that's why I said it, a dotted line, if it needed to be, that was the only thing off of a.
And like.
Off of a chart.
Maybe there was interview, I don't remember what else, but I don't know, but. I think it's over in that area because it's a standing committee, not, not that it has. It's, it's alone, a standing committee, not that it's in charge of the committees. Does that make sense?
Well, no.
To answer, that was to answer Ryland's question.
Yeah, this is working together. I can see this off of the chart. I was just looking at the other, if, if I was gonna. Read an organizational chart the way I kind of normally do with the other dotted lines that you have. Working through that, that's where I was, would say that there should be a dotted line.
I was responding to Ryland's question though.
And the only reason for, okay, I understand what you're saying here, it is a standing committee, it's a standing committee, but. Um, per resolution as needed. So then what is the person, what's the status, what's the function of a Personnel Committee then? If there's no dotted lines either to. City staff. I mean, it seems like it should be somewhere over, it's a standing committee, but it's as needed, then it's, it can be over. Under the city administrator, someplace in between city administrator and the staff. For personnel. I, I don't know, I just, when it's over here, I don't, I don't quite understand the purpose.
Question, do most cities even have a Personnel Committee when they have a city administrator?
No, not having one.
Right, and so I think this was our choice as a council to leave it on the chart at all. And so I think.
That we had some reason, it was all till January, now we have it back again.
No, it was always there. We always had it. Jim Richards is the only person on it. But.
Yeah, you're right.
I, I think it would, personally, what I think we did is I think we. Weren't super comfortable yet with the administrator role, so we kept the Personnel Committee. Really not knowing what function it would serve. And I see us probably dissolving that, especially if we eventually, I, I mean, I don't know, maybe not, but. Especially as we get more staff and who knows, maybe we'll get fancy and have an HR department someday and.
Well, it's just, it was an option, I think, that was put in there that. If the other people that there are wanted to have another ear to hear that might be going on. That that was a place for them to be able to go as well. Okay, and so that's why I think it's good to have that. You know, just as a, as a backup that there is, if it might be, so. That's the reason why I can, I can see where it would, would be good. I think that a hundred percent. That Sunny should be in charge of the personnel, which is what she is as an administrator, that's a part of what your responsibility is. You know, that's why I just had it as a dotted line that if you needed whatever, that you could do it that way on an organizational chart.
Okay, so the stuff on the left are standing committees that's. Don't have staff serving up. That's why they all connect to the city administrator. And I kept the Personnel Committee. As a sounding board, quite honestly, um, and that's why it's only called as needed. The way it was operating before as a true standing committee where you were having. Um, two council reps and all of staff meeting on a regular basis. Without being, you know, it's basically that would become a meeting open to the public. It is not the intent that we wanted them to have.
I think that, that. With that um explanation, it'll work out fine on, on what goes on.
Yeah.
You know, and it goes back to the resolution that there is in twenty twenty-three dash oh two.
Appreciate the time, it's a starting point, let's just see.
Yeah, I think it's, it's, it's great to have, no.
Well, I'm sorry you didn't get the colored. It was, it's been a rough, I'm sorry you didn't get the colored version, because that's.
We got black and white.
Oh. Okay. So I, I would like you to adopt.
I make a motion to adopt the uh organizational, Ornoco, organizational chart.
But you didn't have it, is that?
Voice vote is fine.
Yeah, I got it, I got it. All those in favor, saying aye, everybody saying aye.
Aye.
So this Ornoco Chrome, Ornoco. Minnesota dot gov, is that, is there a cost with that?
No. So um.
It's my questions.
No, it's free. It's, it's free.
No, I kind of like the way it is right now. I don't want to have to go do it.
I'm trying to elevate this city, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I think that's an important distinction.
So is there a motion to do that?
I'll make a. I'll make a motion to change to dot gov.
My second.
And to put everything back through and L M C and all of the other stuff, it's like, come on, this is, we just did it. I had to do it again for the last time, last year, okay, because I was, whatever it was when we went to the dot OrnoCo or dot com. Dot com.
Oh, you mean your email. Are you talking your email? You'll have to change your email. Is that what you're thinking? Do we have to change our email?
Same way, that everything is gonna change.
Yeah.
Let's just leave it this way for this year.
We're getting a new council member. Might as well get him started off on the right foot.
So the L M C conference I see was on this yesterday. Oh, all in favor, sign if I'm ever saying aye.
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 Thank you.
Jim.
It's just here.
I guess it's, it's.
So that was a nail.
Going back to your request to attend the conference in Duluth. I saw that on this, yesterday's, I don't know.
I sent it in a week ago or whatever, so.
The conference in Duluth, next year it'll be in Rochester. And I plan, Joe and I have been talking about this, they, every year they give out a under five thousand population, a City of Excellence awards to the state and I'm, Joe and I are definitely in the council's approval, of course, to apply for that award. It's a thousand dollars to the city for the wastewater project. And I know that he's planning to submit the whole project to, to several engineering awards. And we went to one several years ago when we, for the dam removal and all the waste, they water. I saw the safety and loss workshop, I know that's something that we've done in the past. I'd gone to them. I think they said it was like a half a day, twenty dollars in Rochester, something like that. But all of the stat went one year. Some went to administrative, some went to Public Works. Half a day.
So are, so is this?
Thing I like, I think I like about, excuse me, is that it has safety in it. And we, we have a try and promote safety, but it just kind of draws more attention to M Shaw training and safety and.
I think that'd be good. I think that we should go for that excellence award. I think that's awesome.
And there's something on administrative.
That's twenty twenty-four. Jim, you want to go in twenty twenty-three?
Twenty twenty-three this year, yeah.
Is it a weekend or a weekday or what is this?
It's Wednesday, Thursday and Friday.
Okay, OrnoCo. Chairlift.
Well, wait, we need to vote on if we're sending him or not, right?
All those in favor of the website?
No.
FYI was.
Phillips.
Number three.
Oh, that was FYI, was that an action item? I approve, um, Councilor Phillips attending the L M C conference in Duluth in June. Is there a second?
Oh, I'm sorry. Who is the motion and the second?
I'm second, but.
This is for him to attend the conference.
Ryland made a motion.
Like eight hundred dollars by the time it's over.
And do you think that next year, you know, we should almost get on a rotation so people, two people go each year. Do you know what I mean? Or, or something like that, like two people.
Well, I went last year. Last year, I just.
Yeah.
I didn't, it's nice to go. I don't go every year, but.
Yeah. We should just, it should be, we need to get it on our radar so staff and counselor, you know.
Well, I think especially next year being in Rochester.
Right.
Yeah. It's gonna be great. So, I mean, we could even have more than two go next year.
Right, because you wouldn't have to pay for lodging.
Right. And, and I, the only reason why I did this is because I wanted to try to get, last year it was like the lodging was all gone. By the time I turned around and, and did it last year. So this way, at least I got in with.
Is there, is there, I, I'm not trying to be, say that you shouldn't go, but I, I'm, when is it?
June twenty-fourth, third, something like that.
You know, but should we offer it to say Jim Richards, since he didn't go last year, would, you know, just because you win, should we make sure that it's that it's offered to another council member each year? Or, or
Good, yeah.
Or since we paid for two last year, we'd pay for, you know, two this year. Should we say that, like, make a motion to approve up to two council members?
It's on the budget, because I think we've, we've got that and.
I would like to just open it up to other people as well. And kind of start a, kind of start a rotation, that makes sense.
I'm with you on that. I, I think that, that, but budget wise, we put it in there for everything, so there's enough for two to go.
For two to go. Yeah, perfect. Then we should just motion for two council members.
And what I did is, when I did the city on the hill, instead of going and spending a night up there, I went up and came back.
Well, yeah.
You know, you know, so just spend the money after that.
Day trip. Yeah. I meant, I, I can't.
Well, let's see if, if, is this, if he's available and he works with this schedule, I'm assuming the applications don't have been until.
Wasn't the application I was getting the hotel as well.
I would just make a motion to send two counselors.
Okay, and this, I'll second that one, so.
Up to two counselors, yeah. And then next year, yeah.
All in favor, say if I'm ever saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Approved.
Okay, so, I'm sorry. Um, so, did you amend your motion, I mean, accept her friendly amendment to your motion to approve up to two?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just do it.
And you seconded that motion accepting the friendly amendment.
For, for two, yeah.
Okay, and then, and then we all three oh. Thank you.
It's too late to do things properly, Sunny.
I, I'm feeling like deja vu for like five days in a row.
Okay. Discussion on the chair left, they ran between three and five thousand dollars for new ones.
Can we bring that back in?
Yeah.
Was that for here for the steps?
Yeah. That back, but I, I would like to it's, well, I was hoping we could use our, some A R C money for this um, in April and.
Oh, that's, that's the deadline, I'm sorry.
No, that's what I'd like to.
So does that open up the construction then for anything that needs to be done because we have to make that handicap accessible? Is that what the deal is?
We should, I mean.
Without remodeling or anything like that, we're just.
I'm just, I'm, I'm asking, I mean, that's the only reason, because I know in that discussion when I was listening, you were saying that you could walk down the steps if somebody needed to meet or whatever else that way. And again, I'm not, I'm just, you know, just going by what I was, was hearing, so.
It's been discussion for a while that we need to make that handicap accessible, um, way before we even did the offices down here. And that's, I mean, the history center's up there, so people who are who are, you know, who are older and would probably like to go see the history center and camp, don't have the mobility. I think it'd be a really good well gesture and it would really help include our, you know, age, aging population in what we do here in the city, in City Hall. So I, I think we should go with a new one. I think it would be smart, it probably has a nice warranty.
Here's what, here's one.
Yeah, I mean, there, I've seen it.
This folds downstairs, it doesn't trip.
Yeah, you can fold it up, so.
Yeah.
Um.
Are we talking about it just going from this level up to the, the second level then?
Nothing downstairs, yeah.
Okay, does it like swing around then at the top of the stairs?
So straight up. And then you turn the seat and then you get off.
Yeah. Okay.
You come down on it and you turn and you go, yeah, okay. It's a straight shot.
It would, I think it would be a good, good gesture.
Again, that was just one of those things that I didn't know with listening to last time that you had to mention that, to look into.
The other one was just replacing the L E D sign, replacing our community manual sign with an L E D sign two foot by seven feet, which is what my Grace Lutheran Church has. They put it in a panel, they, they have a little bit bigger sign along with, and two brick pillars, and that costs about twenty-five, twenty-six thousand, so it's it's pretty nice, but we can do a lot inexpensive steel mounting type thing underneath it versus a structure post, but.
We've all already got brick in place.
What's that?
We've already have brick in place.
No, not like that, though.
It's the manual.
What he's talking about is like the whole thing is surround, the whole signage is surrounded by brick down over there.
Yeah.
You have two strict, you have two posts between the sign and there's big panels, it's, it's all metal and this L E Ds in part of that over sign, they have the Grace Lutheran Church on it.
Where, where is it that I'm missing?
Grace Lutheran Church?
No, I know that, I was looking.
Or it's in a verbal comment.
Oh, okay, I was kidding, but where am I?
Can't we, um, can't we utilize the brick frame that we already have for our manual sign? Can't we swap out an L E D?
It's not like the ballots, these occasions, yeah.
Yeah, this is just a, a, or a sheet with some of the stuff, we put manual letters on it. The L E D's about that thick or so. Yeah, the, the display, I guess.
Visit tomorrow.
I thought I had some pictures, but I didn't.
I think you did, but I think you also referenced Grace Church. Okay, and then along with that, so is there a motion then? Do you want action to spend this money?
How much, how much is it total?
This is between three and five.
Right. And then the site, so what do we have, what do we have from that A R C to spend?
Got about seventy-five thousand left.
And we need to spend it by?
Well, we need to spend stuff on stuff like this by the end of April because we, there's this, you could spend up to ten million dollars on pretty much anything. But after that, then it has to go back to the COVID related water infrastructure, like what we're done, quality of water.
So that would work because it's.
So this is kind of gets it in there before we get that, so.
That makes sense, yeah.
The sign can come later. I would like to see a sign over on the west side as well.
So, I'm sorry, do the monies have to be expended or just obligated?
That's a good question, and I, we need to call Lisa Sova at L M C to understand exactly what needs to be documented, if it's a resolution or invoices to come with the resolution.
So could we maybe wait on signage and get this guy ordered?
Well, and you want to do both from the same pot of money, right?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, the signage would be good, I think, you know, I think both of them are good.
But I want to have more conversations about design and stuff.
Well, I mean, can we approve it and then get the blueprint of it, what it looks like?
What's that? I'm sorry.
Could we get the approval and then have them make a blueprint so we know what it's gonna look like?
Yeah, I'd like to go to Chad Tracy and ask them, this is I, ideally would be like the post that we have out on the web, out on the highway. Use that same grid on either side to support our community sign.
Sure.
So there's commonality with northbound, southbound and this welcome introduction sign.
That would be nice.
But we could, and I don't know who they had do the blank, block, block work, but we can it probably costs between this and the sign, probably you know, thirty thousand dollars should be able to cover more than that should be plenty to work with today.
With one sign?
With one sign for now.
Yeah.
But keep in mind, something over Memorial Park or up on the corner by People's Cooperative, they would let us put it up there. But, and these are computer controlled, but you just put that's the other thing that needs power, you have power here, may have to get power over there, or solar.
I like it, especially over on the west side because we talk about tying in things, and so if you can have a ticker telling people tonight's city council meeting, tonight's park, you know what I mean, like, we need that over there.
Yeah, I mean, even if we do, um, solar off of that stuff too, that would be good. You don't have to worry about pulling power from someplace. If we could do it off and, and solar, we'll usually have enough to be able to do with L and D.
That's why Memorial looks good, because there's, there's power lines that go down twelve street. Just do a six hundred dollar transformer.
Okay.
I like it.
I think that's great.
Yeah, and if it's, you know, if it's just obligated on some.
Right.
That would be good. Can I just ask a question? Am I the only one that notices like Jeff?
Yeah, sure.
Shoot. You know, like, we all say Chad Tracy, but he says Sean Tracy, so I think we all got to get used to this.
I think it's Sean.
Sean Tracy, yeah.
And it's people's names.
Yeah, I just never.
So I don't, you know.
Okay. True point.
So we got, is the motion, then we go to, put a motion on that for thirty thousand total for those two, for the chairlift and for the sign?
Oh, no. You're saying thirty thousand for this, for the sign?
For both of them.
Oh, for both of them.
Try and make both of them work.
Yeah.
No way we can do it under one resolution.
You making that motion, Jim, or do you want me? I'll second.
So, okay, I'll work with Joe or Kane and Chad Tracy.
I think, I think we should be looking to do that second sign.
Well, I'm wondering that too, if, if we, if we have seventy-five, should we do it all at once?
Well, that's, Kane's got, Kane's got some funding still for water stuff.
Well, I was just thinking too, we don't know, we don't know how much it's gonna cost.
What are you asking exactly, Ryland?
So we had a few more items used for the water infrastructure off of that American Rescue Plan money.
Yes, there is some improvements that we could do at the wellhouses. There were some, um, hydro testing, uh, testing equipment. Things we can do.
You remember what I, I was thinking about eighty-five thousand we had left to use, but I don't, I apologize for not bringing the folder with me, but.
I, it doesn't ring a bell, Ryland. I know we did the, uh, relief valves, some upgrades to the wellhouses and the tower cleaning, the mixer last year.
We can.
Did you do the H V A C too?
We did do the H V A C in the wellhouses.
Can we do this, uh, Mr. Express? Move things longer to finish up here. We, could we get an estimate and do an email decision to the council members with a quote for two signs? And get a, a two thousand dollar chair? I mean, it's not gonna get used a lot. But
It'd be surprised.
Be commercial grade or anything like that, I wouldn't think.
What I was thinking is that we don't know what the sign's gonna cost, and if we put thirty in and we have enough left over, then we, maybe we can do two instead of doing one.
The only thing we need to do, the only thing we have is an, an April timeframe, end of April. Spend it on, on the signs are communication, that's all important too.
Intend communication, especially for that west side. I feel like there's an argument that it would be.
Okay, let's, let's hold it off till April, because I'd rather have some better figures to talk about.
So we don't, you want, you don't want to do the chair?
Let's do the chair. All right, I, I make a motion, we spend up to.
Okay, so we need to withdraw that. Jim made a motion.
I withdraw my motion.
And you withdraw your second?
I do. We'll bring back in April.
Right.
For the signage.
Right.
Okay.
So I would like to at the same time, but, yeah.
So we can do a motion now for the chair. So I make a motion, we spend up to thirty-five hundred dollars for a chairlift.
Okay.
Then I'm sure we all in favor, are we saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. That's approved. I think we're done with
staffing update, Gold Rush Days. You got staffing update on number four?
Oh, staffing update, yes.
I'll have it totally complete for you. I'll, my choices are made, the offers are out, I'm waiting for them to come back, and, yeah.
That's a good update, thank you. I was hoping you'd say that.
No, I need.
Okay, Gold Rush Days, minutes, gathering permit, get the office for approval, but we do have a resolution. Or no whole harness agreement.
Well, and I need to work on that a little bit.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, because it, right now, you'll see, it's set up for you to, and you signed it as mayor of both. But remember, Gold Rush is its own entity, you're not mayor of that.
Chairperson.
Entity, you're chair of it, you can sign it as chair.
Oh, I see, we say mayor. But that's part of the notary.
And are you a notary?
Nope.
Okay, so I want, I just want to clean it up, okay, so it's. I think, I think it's just been recycled and recycled and that, it, it's starting to not make sense.
So you get a copy of that from Joanne?
That's where.
So that'll come back.
Yep. Contracts went out, each vendor's getting ten adorable postcards, so there.
The wait worked out okay, huh?
Resolution twenty twenty-three dash ten, delegating local board of appeal and equal say, and open books meeting to Moesight County.
So we failed.
I make a motion, we approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash ten.
Okay.
Roll call, bro.
Rolling.
I wouldn't bake. Mayor Aykors, I, Kelsey Berger, I, Kelsey Phillips.
Hi.
Thank you.
That's been the work to get it.
Consent agenda, no, we have an action, the fee schedule.
Yeah. Um, fee skip.
Oh, yes, okay, yeah.
Cause you had some things that were.
I had in my notes.
Huh?
Yeah, I had in my notes from our fee schedule meeting that I asked you.
Yeah, so here's your, okay. Yeah, so that was your version, um, and I agree with, uh. I agree with the, um, golf cart permit. Instead of five dollars every two years, it's ten dollars per year. Okay, so.
We get an exemption for what we're doing for Gold Rush?
That's a different. Remember how we handled that, that was, uh. We know we have to have a, get a permit if you're gonna bring your gold for a handicap.
I'm just talking about us, when we get those ready, do we have to worry about code?
No, those are rent?
Yeah.
No, that's, that's a separate deal.
Okay.
No, we, we pay for those, we pay a lot of money for those.
Right, I didn't know we had to repeat or permit.
Okay, the garbage hauler?
The garbage hauler, but I, I had no note to delete that.
Okay.
All I had was a, um, a designation of who.
The mine I had.
Waste management, does residential and L R S does commercial.
I wasn't sure what it was.
Right.
Garbage hauler licenses, oh, that's like a business license for those people, for those businesses.
I don't think we've ever charged them for that. Yes, we have a contract with them and, at the garbage haulers.
I guess.
Advanced, uh, best disposal.
We do, the city has a contract?
Yeah, or waste management, whichever is.
It's like two years, I think.
Yeah, we have.
I can't remember their name. So then they give us a discounted rate for.
Residential rates, yeah.
Residential and our.
Okay, so.
So I scratched out the gra- garbage hauler license and also the investigative research fee.
Okay, and that was because we didn't, okay, it used to be just an investigative fee that nobody knew what it was. So I added research, because it will come into play if we continue to have these issues. Of, um, fixing.
Information.
Things, yeah.
But who do you charge it to?
Whoever's asking for the research.
I feel like we're the ones asking for the research.
I know, often that's fine.
Only ones asking for the research.
But we do charge them a copy permit, you know, or a copy page.
Copy fee.
Page per copy of stuff.
Yeah, and my note didn't say hi.
Dollar per page, well, that's actually.
Yeah, I guess I know what you're saying, because people will wanna get information.
Yeah, okay, we can, I just.
On, on their, on, yeah, all sorts of things, especially with development coming. Makes sense.
So leave that one calling P or which one we have?
Investigative research, F B I, B.
Well, yeah, you know, I mean, if somebody comes in and, and asks for, um, the minutes of. A council meeting from two years ago, that you have to go down and take it out, that would be a research fee, right, for?
I think I would direct them to the website.
I'm just.
I wouldn't.
Yeah, I, you know, I can try, I can take it off of.
No, I think that, that whether you do it or not, at least it's on them, you know.
That's true, will you actually do it? Will you, and who will you charge and who won't you charge?
Well, it's, but at least you can't do it if you don't have it on here, okay, and then we can elect to do it or not to do it, but.
Which is the whole thing with the business license, we don't have that, and now we're starting to see.
You should be doing that job, yeah.
Now, that was one of our questions about a business license.
Yeah, and we just, we just moved it to twenty twenty-four consideration.
Well, and I think that that's because we need that.
So what we decided to, just rename it to research fee or leave it?
Just leave it.
And on the second page was just editorial.
Oh, I scratched, okay, I scratched it, underwater fuse, you're absolutely right, that eighteen eighty-three flat facility of the base. That need, that number needs to come out, because.
And then I had, we said non-residential or commercial, did we, did we say it was non-residential?
Yeah, because it's.
Commercial.
Didn't we?
I thought, that's what I had, he had commercial.
We had, we said non-residential.
I think that encompasses more things, non-residential.
Right, because then you can, technically, it could be mixed use, industrial, commercial.
M one, whatever, yeah, it's not a non-residential.
I, I thought we were talking. Because we, you know, we have businesses in town, that's what I thought we had. We were going after the Peoples and Casey's and every.
Which is non, non-residential.
Non-residential, but.
Well, and, and I think for me, it was, remember, um, Kane has to do that reporting that define, you know. And how he classifies it is.
Non-residential.
Residential or non-residential.
Yeah, so it's more consistent.
That's fine, all right.
Yeah, cause if you're sleeping, it's.
So with that, I make a motion, we approve the twenty twenty-three fee schedule.
Second.
As amended.
As amended, second. All in favor? Saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's approved. The motion because consent agenda?
Motion to consent agenda.
I'll second that. So minutes are. Didn't make it this month, but hopefully next month.
Yes.
So may I ask? Is that something that?
And it's all your name, I'm just saying.
What's that?
And it's all your name every time, when I dictated, it keeps coming out of different.
So, you, you tend to. Have more brevity in the meeting minutes than what we've had in the past. As far as the council minutes, I think.
Do I?
Is it verbatim, we used to be verbatim.
Oh, Lord.
And so I'm not saying that, what, I'm not saying that needs to be done, I'm just saying Renee, I think, has the capability of doing meetings. And I don't know if that was how her work plan works out, but that could, if she could help out, cause you've, you've set the template down for the last. August through, or June, July through December or whatever, so is that something that Renee can transition for you to help get things off of your table to? Establishing a template?
And I have asked that, I'm waiting for the new people.
There you go.
Because I, I really need Renee to, and of course, our auditors were on site. Or, or are they counting people who are on site, and the auditors will be here August seventeenth. Right before. Did I say August? April seventeenth, I come back from vacation, Monday, they, their auditors are here doing fieldwork. Tuesday is council meeting, so I really need her to focus on cleaning up.
Okay, no, I understand.
Twenty twenty-two.
There's something after that, that could help me out.
I think the new people, that would be good for them to get an understanding too, by doing the minutes, they'll, they'll see more of what's happening.
If we can just make sure they're online, the mi- the meetings are online, I think, then there's something.
Yeah.
You know, if the minutes aren't done, but the meetings are online, I think they are pretty up to date. At least we have something.
Your advocates have web experience?
Yes.
So they can go in and start, cause very little is twenty twenty-three on the website right now, whether it's. P and Z or anything, there's not much out there as far as twenty twenty-three.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Well, that's because the minutes aren't done.
Well, like P and Z.
Oh, I'll see, and the other thing is, though, that, yeah.
Oh, I submit them, I submit them that night, I don't say they're not submitted.
No, I, I'm.
I do it that night.
Well, and what happens is, is that. The unapproved me- minutes are always being submitted.
We just have to approve, we have.
But they don't get approved until the next meeting.
So you're, we're a month behind, essentially.
Well, yeah, cause we didn't get the P and Z either, that we're supposed to be in here.
And we're.
For the four minutes?
All right, team, I gotta roll.
Oh, not, not in, uh.
In the packet.
Cause you picked your packet up early.
That what it was, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, I, I just went, went, okay, probably there, so.
I had a lot of questions on those. Why were?
Okay.
On my line, I know.
Okay, so. So the consent agenda, I'm sorry, once you made the motion and.
They made the motion, I seconded. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion, meeting adjourned.
Second.
Okay, I will be on vacation the first week of April.
Do we have stuff? Do we have stuff?
No, I'm just saying, but I will be on vacation the first week of April.
You're bragging then?
My, my.
So, so you're bragging then, or what?
No, I mean, I just, it's like I'm going to Branson, if I don't get a call, come back and take care of my dad again, so.
Oh, yeah.
Emergency room, emergency room, I'll get another nurses there, it's like, I'm getting bad.
Did we, did we make, did we adjourn?
We did.
I don't know what happened here, you guys, this thing is.
And we gotta fix this till the.